Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is six o'clock PM. We'll be starting this meeting momentarily. If you have any cellular devices, pagers, beepers, please put them on silent or vibrate. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is underway. Councilwoman James, you have the floor for this evening's invocation.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful sunshine this afternoon and the rain later. We thank you for this council. We thank you for this city and administration. We ask today that you would bless us, oh God, that you would bless the meeting, bless all of the discussion, bless us to do what is in the best interest of the residents of this city. And we just ask your blessings over the city with so much going on. We thank you for your blessings. Thank you for keeping us. Thank you for directing and instructing us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. We will now, as a community, hold a moment of silence, remembering those who have recently passed away, our neighbors. In alphabetical order, we read them now. Kathryn Blazek, Jacqueline Bro, Jacqueline Bro, excuse me, Jerry Cole Senior, Darren Hammond, Ronald Helm, Bernal Holmes, Larry Howard, Diane Johnson, Oris Martin, Mary McCollman, Ruth McCullough, Ronald Metz, Alan Muniz, Tomas Reyes, Kathleen Shields Nelson, Gail Stovall, Adalina Travis Stubbs, Theodore Tucker, Barbara West, and Michael Warden. Please join us as a community to remember them with a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call of council members. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman. James.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
McGinnis.
Present.
Parker. Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have quorum.
Quorum being established. We have heard from Councilman Parker that he will not be able to be here this evening. We hope he feels better soon. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilman William Parker, Jr. from this evening's meetings for personal reasons?
Support.
It's been moved by Council on Rutherford, seconded by pro temp Carrington. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, no amendments. Roll call. Clerk Doyle on the motion to authorize the excusing.
Carrington.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The council members excused. Word approval of the agenda? Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Support.
It's been moved by Council on Rutherford, seconded by pro temp Carrington. The agenda is now before us for consideration. Any discussion, any amendments, any clarifications? Hearing none? Roll call and adoption of the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. We are now at approval of the consent agenda. I'd like to recognize Councilman Goodman as present and voting. It's been moved by Council on Rutherford. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Council on Rutherford, seconded by pro temp Carrington. Are there any items that council members wish to pull from the consent agenda for further deliberation?
Mr. Mayor. Is Consent Agenda H something that's... Why is that?
It was submitted for... It was submitted for the Clerk's Office inclusion on Friday, but due to technical reasons, they did not have it when they hit print, so it's being submitted. But we did have it circulated later last week. And for everyone's reference, that's a resolution requesting the mayor to provide written policies of the city's winter weather public work strategies to ensure understanding and preparation prior to the seasonal snow removal needs or icy conditions. I'll read the items in the consent agenda, and if any council members need to discuss further, we can pluck them accordingly. A, City Council Special Meeting Minutes of October 7th, including closed session minutes. B, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes of October 7th. C, Resolution Recognizing Family Court Awareness Month for November in the city of Pontiac. D, Resolution Recognizing Veterans Day in the city of Pontiac for November 11th, 2025. E, Resolution Recognizing the Annual Levy of Chapter 4 and Lake Assessments on the Winter Tax Rule. F, Resolution Authorizing Assessment of Aged Receivables as Special Assessments on the Winter Tax Rule. G, Resolution Authorizing the Purchase and Installation of a Record Storage System for the 50th District Court. H, which I had read previously about the winter weather policies for public works. I, Resolution to Enter into a Professional Service Agreement with the Damo Demolition Company for the Abatement and Demolition Support Services for the service building at 350 University Drive. J, Resolution Approving Memorandum of Understanding with Roof Collier Drainage District Board to Facilitate Grant-Funded Wetland Restoration Work at Murphy Park in the city of Pontiac. And K, Resolution Approving Michigan Department of Transportation Construction Contract Number 25-5428 for Signal Modernization and Pedestrian Safety Improvements. Is any further discussion needed on any of those consent items? Hearing none. The council consents to them being taken up in one motion. Roll call and adoption and approval of the consent agenda items. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda and those items are adopted. We are now at special presentations. First will be the City Clerk's Office updating the community on the municipal election from November 4th, voting process options. Thank you to our friends in the Water Resources Commission for your work on the grant restoration of the wetlands of Murphy Park. It's been approved. Okay. Clerk Doyle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the public is aware, we've been doing these updates at the last three council meetings, so this is the last meeting prior to the Tuesday, November 4th, general election. Just as a reminder, there are three different ways that you can vote in this upcoming election. You can still vote by absentee ballot, or you can vote early, or at your polling location, which we like to say is the last opportunity to vote on Tuesday, November 4th. So as relates to absentee ballots, we have mailed out where people have come in person and gotten their absentee ballot. Eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six ballots. Of those eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six ballots, two thousand three hundred and forty-six ballots have been returned, received. So that gives us a 28% return rate. We are exactly two weeks from Election Day. So if you want to track your absentee ballot, you can look at that QR code or go to mi.gov/vote. When you return your ballot to one of our drop boxes, or when we're receiving in the mail, then we go into the system and we say that the ballot has been received and it shows up on that website that your ballot has been received. You can return your ballot directly to the Clerk's Office or to one of the four official drop boxes. There's one right outside of City Hall, one at the Bowen Center, one at the Ruth Peterson Center, and one at the fire station on Huron. Again, those are 24 hours accessible, and they're all under video surveillance for 24 hours as well, too. You also have the option of bringing your ballot when early voting, and early voting actually starts this Saturday, October 25th, at 8:30 AM at the Pontiac Public Library. You can bring your absentee ballot, if you have one, to the early voting site and the ballot can be tabulated. Or you can bring it to your assigned polling location on November 4th, and it can be tabulated. So again, I mentioned early voting starts this Saturday. These are the early voting hours. Early voting is nine days prior to the election, so it will run from this Saturday, October 25th, to the following Sunday, November 2nd. And the early voting hours are 8:30 AM until 4:30 PM every day except for Thursday, October 30th, which is the late day, and it will be from 12 PM until 8 PM. The early voting site for this election is the Pontiac Public Library. Here is the precinct map. I know it may be a little hard to see, but you can... The presentation will be online, and you can click on the link there to go to the precincts. That's the precinct map, the citywide new precinct map, which shows all 14 precincts, the locations of the precincts, and you can blow up the map on your computer to see where your street is, to see which actually precinct you're in. As a reminder, we did mail out new voter registration cards back in June to all voters in the city. You can also go to mi.gov/vote, putting your personal information, your name, your address, and your polling location will come up there as well, too. Excellent. So the precincts 1, 2, and 3 are at Whitmore Human Resource Center, just across the street here. For the primary election, we had voters entering the back of the school. That became a little difficult for voters, so for this upcoming general election, they will enter in the main entrance. So you will see the sign. We ask that you look out for the signs at the polling locations. So this is precincts 1, 2, and 3, and you will see a voter entrance sign. So the voter entrance sign is pointing to the main entrance. So you will enter into the main entrance, and you will be able to vote there if you're located in precincts 1, 2, or 3. The Bowen Center is where precincts 4 and 5 are. Most people are familiar with the Bowen Center, and you actually enter into the back of the building, to the Bowen Center. Walt Whitman Elementary is where precincts 6 and 7 are. A lot of schools have multiple entrances, but it's pretty clear Walt Whitman pretty much has a main entrance, and you would enter there if you're in precincts 6 or 7. Alcott Elementary is where precinct 8 is. So there's precinct Alcott Elementary. That's the front of the school, but the voting is actually pretty much at the back of the school where the playground and the basketball courts are. And again, when there are multiple locations to enter a school or something, we will have a voter entrance sign, so where it's easily accessible to the voters, so where they know where to enter. Kennedy Junior High is precincts 9 and 10. And again, Kennedy has, seems like, multiple entrances, but the voters will enter in by the basketball courts, and that's where you will vote, in the gymnasium. And then Pontiac High School is where precincts 11 and 12 are, and is the athletic entrance, where the gym is, where you will actually enter and vote. And then the Salvation Army is where precincts 13 and 14 are located, and it's pretty much a main entrance to the Salvation Army. We will be doing some videos that we will post on the Facebook and Instagram pages that the clerk has, so where you can share those with your neighbors and things like that, so where they will exactly know the locations of the precincts and to look out for the voter entrance signs, where they will know where, in essence, to go. Voter registration, again, yesterday was the last day that you could register pretty much anywhere for this upcoming election and vote, but you still can register all the way up to Election Day, actually on Election Day, but you have to do that now in person in the clerk's office. And you have to have proof of residency. You did not need proof of residency before today, but you must have proof of residency at this point. So you would, in addition to having your driver's license or state ID, you need like a utility bill, something to show that you reside there if you want to vote in the upcoming election on November the 4th. We're required to be open the weekend before the election, and the clerk's office will be open both Saturday and Sunday. So Saturday, November 1st, will be open from 10 AM until 12... I mean, 10 AM to 2 PM, and then Sunday, 12 PM until 4 PM. So if you want to vote by absentee ballot, you want to register to vote, all of our services will be available on those two days. That's the weekend, not this coming weekend, but the weekend right before the election. Again, the service team is available to assist any voters that are handicapped, elderly in the hospital, or anything like that. As a matter of fact, if you have your absentee ballot, or you want to get an absentee ballot, and you don't want to get out of your car, you simply contact us during normal business hours, and we can have someone come out to your vehicle and assist you. You just would need to have your photo identification. And again, what's on the ballot? Again, the mayor's race is on the ballot, the council member-at-large seat, and then the individual council districts. Again, we have only six districts now, so on everyone's ballot, there will be the mayor's race, and you know you can only vote for one, the council member-at-large, you can only vote for one, and then you would vote for which particular council district that you're located in. And then the library board, you can vote for no more than six candidates. And then on the back of the ballot is the ballot proposal about the local school district building and site sinking fund mileage renewal proposal. And then, again, those are the clerk's social media pages, where we will be posting those videos over the next several days leading up to the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. Pro temp Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. A quick question, Clerk Doyle. When it comes to the precincts, do they correspond with the districts?
No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, because in the past, I know you always used to do a printout where it says District 1, and what precincts? District 2, what precincts?
And we still have that available, and that is on the website, but... And I've shown that in previous presentations, but this particular presentation, I want to alert the people, because there has been some confusion, as to where exactly do you need to enter a building, so that's why I didn't include that particular...
So I was just asking, because I know a lot of times people, it clicks in when they say that they vote in District 5. They don't necessarily remember the precincts.
Okay.
So that, you know, just to make sure that we get it out there, we don't want nobody to miss voting.
Right, of course.
You know, so...
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
And again, on your voter registration card, it did, for the very first time, we had the council district. It has, of course, your congressional district, your state senate district, your state house district, your county commission district, but it also had your city council district on your voter registration card as well.
Any final discussion for the special presentation? All right. Thank you to the staff and team that's involved in the municipal election administration process. Please contact the clerk's office if you have any questions. All right. We're at our second special presentation. It's the conclusion of the CRISPR research project. Want to hear your results, so we turn it over to our Pontiac Senior Services Manager, Senior Services Director. But Mayor Grimaud, would you like the floor first?
Well, I do just want to express the excitement that I have around this program. This is a partnership between Oakland University and the city, and it's all about trying to make sure that we're looking at what are the most effective programs for our senior population, both so that we can continue to improve programs, but also make sure that we're selecting the best programs that actually benefit our seniors. And so this is, I think, a really wonderful partnership that has been in place now for some time, and I want to turn it over, of course, to Deborah Finley to walk us through the details of the study, the collaboration, and the findings. So take it away, Ms. Finley.
Okay. So good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, Council, and community. Thank you for having us back. We are a community-based research team. Our team includes Dr. Mark Manning, Dr. Martha Esco-Burg, and they are professors from Oakland University, students from Oakland University, and of course, our seniors from our community. These seniors, which we like to refer to ourselves as senior scientists... Stand up, senior scientists. Okay, so... So we were actually trained and certified in research methods, data collection and analysis. Okay. And our first research topic was to find out reasons why our seniors did or did not use our centers. And the method that we used was we conducted focus groups. We actually had five focus groups. We had a group of seniors that attend the Bowen Center. We had a group of seniors that attend the Ruth Peterson Center. We had active seniors in the community. They're active, but they do not use either center. We had inactive seniors that they just stayed at home and really didn't participate in much of anything. And finally, a residential senior living facility in Pontiac. So with that, I'm excited to introduce you to Dr. Martha, that's going to explain some of the results.
Thank you, Deborah. So we have preliminary results. We're currently analyzing the data from the focus groups that we conducted. One of the first things that we wanted to determine was whether the name senior center was driving some people away, and what we found out is that people that are currently making use of the senior centers and people that live at senior living facilities have a preference for the term senior center, but younger seniors and those that are currently not attending the centers will like to refer to them as community rather than senior centers. We asked people how they find out what is going on at the senior centers. For people who attend the senior centers currently, most of them hear about the activities by word of mouth, so from other attendees to the center, and also by using the Internet, specifically the Facebook page of the senior centers. Some of them, just as they drop in, learn the information about the activities of the center, or they take handouts at the center. For those individuals who are currently not attending the center, which were the focus of our research, they will like to receive information at home. They said that the way that they will prefer to get that information is if it was mailed to their house, either as a mailing or a handout, or if it was posted in front of the senior centers, especially as they have special events in a marquee or something like that. Those individuals are less likely to use the Internet to gather their information, so a lot of the information that is being distributed by the senior centers may actually be lost to these individuals. We also tried to figure out why people may not attend the senior centers, and what we found is that for individuals... And what we found is that for individuals that are currently not attending, most of them may have issues with transportation as they depend on others to take them to the center. And this was specifically a problem for individuals currently living in senior living facilities. Also, the fact that they're not getting the information means that they're not motivated to attend the activities at the senior centers. Some of our younger seniors also said they still work. They're still active, either by working or taking care of family members. And the fact that the opening hours of the centers overlap with business hours may be a barrier for them to make use of the centers. We asked people, do you understand that going to the senior center may be an advantage? And this was for those that do not attend. We actually distributed information about the activities that go on at the senior center. And people agree overwhelmingly that attending the senior centers is something that can help with their physical, mental, and emotional well-being by socializing, receiving social support, and staying active. There are a lot of fitness classes and activities that lead to that wellness. And the centers were also viewed as a hub of information. As we said, some people that do not attend the centers also do not make use of the internet, but they can go to the senior centers and get information that is specific to senior citizens. We did ask people what sort of activities will they like to see offered at the senior centers. And people want to have some structured activities like classes and workshops and some unstructured activities like dropping games and tournaments, and also some entertainment activities like movies and dances and music and the like. They are also very, very interested in activities that can keep them active. Outings, day trips, and overnight trips were some of the favorite activities. And one thing that we found that was very heartwarming is the fact that most of our seniors have been long-term residents of Pontiac. They love Pontiac and they want to give back to the community of Pontiac. So they wanted the centers to be some sort of an organizer for them to be able to give back to the community, either through mentoring of youth or creating peer support programs, especially for those that are dealing with aging partners or are alone after losing a partner. One other thing that we found out is that men are much less likely than women to attend the centers. And they were interested in men-preferred activities such as tournaments, fishing, sport watching events, and some classes that are aimed at, for example, individuals that are now living alone and do not have cooking skills, you know, getting some of those daily living skills. So in conclusion, our senior centers provide a very important service and play a very important role for seniors' physical, mental, and emotional wellness. And more seniors will benefit from the services of the center if they were receiving information about the activities that are going on at the centers through mailings or handouts that they can receive at home. Thank you very much.
Anything else for the senior scientists? Please stand again and be celebrated by your neighbors. Thank you. Any final discussion from council members on the senior research project? Congratulations again. Well done. We are at the third and final special presentation, Career Fitness Camp and Pathways to Progress: Access for All. Mr. Carlton Jones and other presenters have the floor to share with the community and the council.
Okay, good evening. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and present. For those of you who did not hear, the presentation is about the Career Fitness Camp that we have been putting on for several years. I want to thank President McGinnis and Pro Tem Carrington for both have been very receptive to saying that they wanted the presentation to be presented to the people of Pontiac. And I'm thankful for that. The work that we've been doing for workforce development, someone told me that, and I think it could be very true. They said, Carlton, most people probably don't even really know what workforce development is. I know I've heard people say the work we do sometimes, you know, people not getting a job. Now, if you understand workforce development, workforce development is just like you sending somebody to college. You can send somebody to college and they can go through college, and it doesn't guarantee them no job. But at the end of the day, if they got some credentials saying that they finished college, that credential can take them a long way. So understand the workforce development piece is all about trying to get people some credentials, trying to get them the credentials they need to be engaged. And one thing that I want to say to everybody, the construction industry is very picky about who they let into apprenticeship programs. Is the reason why is a lot different than college, because if you get a let into the apprenticeship program in the construction arena, they looking for you to complete it. Because they start investing into you day one. Day one, they start investing into you. You get vested, you start getting time in, you start gaining a pension. All these things come when you get into apprenticeship program. So it's just not like you can walk up there and think you can walk into apprenticeship. You don't. Just like everybody's not cut for college, everybody's not cut for construction apprenticeship. And most people don't know, on the commercial side, when you're trying to get in on the commercial side of the construction arena, and especially if it's unionized, you cannot go on that project unless you go through the unions. And that's a fact. And everybody who's from this city and know this city has been highly unionized, that right there has been a benefit. Because people get a chance to come in and they get decent living wages when they come in up under the union umbrella. So I'm happy to say today, we have been through the work, the hard work of State Representative Brenda Carter, who has continuously supported the work that we do with TDC and the conglomerate of people who work with us. We have promoted that we don't work alone. TDC is a coalition. Anybody who want to join hands and work together, because it's a whole lot to prepare people for the work world when you're trying to get into skilled areas. OCC, Oakland University, you know, all these players, Habitat, All Construction. These are folks who are all players of the coalition to try to make people prepared for skilled areas. And through the work of State Representative Carter, she was fortunate enough to have a fantastic organization called Workforce Development Institute, who was supporting the program of Access for All. Access for All is a readiness training program for skilled trades. A readiness training program for skilled trades. Now, what we do here locally is try to make sure that we can have an opportunity to prepare our Pontiac residents to get accepted. You cannot just walk in the door and say, give me an opportunity, unless you have certain requirements fulfilled. Tonight, you'll get a chance to hear about some of those requirements that you can see the work that we do in the fitness camp of getting our Pontiac residents ready to get accepted into the readiness program, which will get them ready to go into a actual apprenticeship program. There's no guarantee. When they open the door for apprentices, you need to be ready. Because sometimes, they will only open the door for a short window. They will open and say, we want electricians and you got seven to 10 days to apply. You cannot start then to try to say you want to get ready. If you're not already ready, you won't get a chance to put in an application for getting into the apprenticeship program. So just to give everybody a little idea that we need to always be ahead of the game, ahead of the game to try to get our residents ready to be ready for anything of a skilled area. So I'm thankful for this opportunity. And I'm thankful for the night I have Ms. Edman, who is the actual executive director, who leads Workforce Institute. She will follow behind me with the details of the program that we've tied to now. And I'm just thankful for the people in Pontiac. We do have a few of the students who are in our camp right now. But I'm gonna let them come up after she goes ahead and makes this next presentation. But President McGinnis, I'm thankful that you offered this opportunity. Pro Tem Carrington, I appreciate the fact that you supported this. You put it out there for students to come in. And we have been receiving hits for folks to come into the camp. And we're now starting to prepare people for all these projects we're doing around here. We're a little bit behind for all these projects. There's no reason why our people in Pontiac couldn't be engaged. But these projects, you cannot just walk up there and say, I want a job. That's not how it go. But we're gonna do our best to try to play catch-up. And at the end of the day, with the help of DWI and Access for All, we truly believe we can start moving in the right direction to improve our opportunities for Pontiac residents to be engaged in the work we do here in Pontiac. So I want to introduce Ms. Edmans, who actually has a power poor presentation talk about DWI, oh, excuse me, WDI, WDI, which is Workforce Development Institute and the Access for All. So Ms. Edman, would you come forward?
Thank you. And I'm sorry, we couldn't get the presentation up so you all could follow along. But my name is Sierra Edmans. I'm the statewide apprenticeship readiness training program manager at Michigan AFL-CIO's Workforce Development Institute. And we house the Access for All Apprenticeship Readiness Training Program. I just wanted to share a little bit about the program as well as this Pathways to Progress Initiative that we are bringing to Pontiac. Our mission at WDI is to combat economic and environmental injustice by connecting unemployed and underemployed individuals with training and resources that they need to secure meaningful, sustainable employment. And so with this new Pathways to Progress Initiative, our mission is to expand equitable access to those high-quality apprenticeship readiness trainings, empowering Pontiac and surrounding community members with the skills, certifications, and support that they need to build sustainable careers going into the skilled trades and related industries. Our vision with this initiative is a thriving community where residents, regardless of their background, have clear, supportive pathways into registered union apprenticeships, sustainable employment, and leadership roles in the skilled trades, fueling both personal prosperity and regional economic growth. Our goals during this initiative is to ensure that all participants complete the Pathways to Progress Access for All program, earning their multi-craft core curriculum credential, creating a recognized pathway into registered apprenticeships, connect participants with meaningful employment and registered apprenticeship opportunities by building strong partnerships with unions, contractors, and employers. Also leveraging trusted community leaders and organizations to recruit, mentor, and support our participants, ensuring that the program reflects the needs of Pontiac residents. We want to provide wraparound services, including case management, mentorship, and wellness supports to help participants succeed during their training and beyond. We want to align our training cohorts with local redevelopment infrastructure projects like the Phoenix Redevelopment and the MLK Bridge, ensuring that residents are benefiting directly from community investment. And we want to develop joint strategies for funding program evaluation and continuous improvement to ensure long-term success of the partnership and expansion of our training opportunities. And so our program works not just for Michigan, but more importantly, it works for people. And in order to deliver this program in Pontiac, Representative Brenda Carter brought us all together as stakeholders to join forces. And so she is a part of our advisory committee, providing leadership advocacy and policy support for workforce development and apprenticeship expansion. Mr. Jones with the Carnav Group is supporting us with alignment with broader regional talent development strategies and assisting with employer and labor union engagement. We also have Mr. Brenner, Jermaine Brenner, from the Perry Street Empowerment Group, to support participants with readiness, physical, career readiness and wellness, offering applied learning opportunities that are connected directly to construction projects and access to post-employment opportunities. And we also have Mr. Randy Carter as our community anchor, who'll be providing community engagement, recruitment, and mentorship to help ensure that our initiative is rooted in the needs of Pontiac residents. So when individuals apply and enroll in our program post-joining the Career Fitness Camp, our curriculum is a nationally recognized curriculum used by the North America's building trades unions. We provide OSHA 30, First Day CPR, AED, and additional certifications in areas like lead and asbestos awareness, and sometimes aerial lifting others when they're available. We also teach employment readiness skills, blueprint reading, construction math, and financial literacy with hands-on experience as well as visiting construction sites for onsite work experience, all essential skills needed to thrive in union apprenticeships. We're proud to have connections with more than 15 skilled trade unions, including carpenters, ironworkers, electricians, cement masons, plumbers, pipe fitters, and more. These partnerships are key to the success of our program, ensuring that our graduates have real access to apprenticeship openings and lifelong career pathways. We don't train on a specific career, but we offer explore, exploration, and exposure to participants so they can decide where their next steps will be. In order to qualify, participants must be 18 years or older and live in the area that we service, have a valid driver's license, birth certificate, social security card, and high school diploma, or GED. For individuals with barriers or license reinstatement needs or missing documentation, we'll be working with community partners to help resolve those barriers. Our program is designed to be accessible for working adults and parents. So it is a hybrid model, ensuring flexibility while maintaining our hands-on and high-quality training. So throughout the week, we meet on Zoom, but on Saturdays, we meet in person. Since 2014, our programs have trained hundreds of Michiganders, including women, people of color, and youth who previously are underrepresented in the trades. Our results speak for themselves. We consistently exceed Michigan benchmarks for diversity and participation in registered apprenticeships. Access for All began in 2014 in Detroit and have now expanded across 11 communities across the state, from Lansing, Flint, Saginaw, Detroit, Jackson, Battle Creek, Kalamazoo, Ben Harbor, Grand Rapids, Muskegon, the U.P. with a focus on Marquette. We're proud that our graduates not only meet, but often surpass state averages for women, youth, and people of color in apprenticeships. This is the kind of success we hope to replicate right here in Pontiac. But the real power of this program lies in the community impact. By developing local talent, we help reduce unemployment, strengthen small businesses, and increase homeownership. At the same time, we're helping break cycles of poverty by connecting residents to high-wage, high-demand careers that transform lives for generations to come. We'll be combining hands-on training, strong community partnerships, and a supportive network to ensure participants are prepared to succeed in their registered union apprenticeships and build a long-term career in the skilled trades. In our program, we offer a holistic approach to workforce success. We offer a wraparound, people-centered approach, where we don't just train workers, but we support them along their journey. Participants receive case management and career coaching, weekly stipends to help with transportation, and assistance with childcare or housing as funding allows. We also offer PPE and certification costs are covered, and we address real barriers like car repairs, license reinstatement, and food assistance. This holistic support helps remove the obstacles that often prevent people from completing training and entering sustainable employment. Our recruitment process is intentional and community-driven. We build partnerships with local organizations, schools, and workforce agencies to identify residents who are ready to take the next step. Applicants go through orientation, assessment, and interview to help us understand their needs and assess their readiness. Our focus is on transparency, accountability, and accessibility, making sure that participants feel supported and employees see us as a trusted partner. Once enrolled, participants are receiving classroom instruction, hands-on experience, and consistent mentorship. Our case managers will be working closely with each student to set goals, track progress, and remove barriers along the way. Beyond technical training, we focus on leadership, teamwork, and communication, preparing participants not just for the job, but for long-term success in their careers and the communities. After graduation, we also help participants transition directly into their registered apprenticeships or other employment opportunities. Our team maintains strong relationships with employers, hosting hiring events, mentorship programs, and alumni networks to ensure continued success. We also provide ongoing case management because our commitment doesn't end at graduation. Our apprenticeship readiness training program is more than just workforce development. It's an investment in Pontiac's people, neighborhoods, and future. We would love to collaborate with the city council to identify opportunities for partnership, recruitment, and potential funding alignment to support and sustain the launch of our local Pathways to Progress Access for All cohort. Together, we can build a future by giving Pontiac residents tools, skills, and the support that they need to thrive. Thank you.
I really hope that everybody can appreciate. We couldn't have a presentation that didn't come up on the screen, so she had to read it. But I hope everybody can appreciate the type of services that WDI is bringing to the table here in Pontiac. And if, Pro Tem, if you had a question, we'd be glad to answer any questions. But I just want to let you know, this is an opportunity to not only for us to talk about the construction that's going on or the great things that's going on, but this is an opportunity for the Pontiac residents to benefit. for the Pontiac residents to benefit. We can actually get Pontiac residents to look at how we can up their incomes and come to a whole nother level in this city. So when they start building these homes, it costs more, we can afford them. That's what it's truly all about, is we gotta have the way to lift up the incomes of people in Pontiac, especially when we get these projects going on and everybody else come in here and make tons of money, and Pontiac stays the same. So hopefully that you all can appreciate, we want to truly make this project shine. But I'll tell you, we, from the experience, we may start with 10 good, hard students to start, even in our two-week camp, and before it's over, it might be down to five because they're just not ready to make the commitment. So if you don't make the commitment, that's not showing that you're ready to go into a skilled area. So just understand, there will be some attrition of people not cutting the mustard. We tell them, wait till they're ready, and they can come and then commit to a program like this. So hopefully that it's very appreciative. I do have a couple students that's actively engaged in one of our camps right now, and I'd like for them to come up and just share a second of just their experience. Stan and Ms. Alexander, come up for a minute.
Good evening, Council, how you doing? I'm Stanley Tatterby. I'm also a student at Pathway. This is the opportunity to take advantage of my field, especially with the future development of the city, and especially for high school graduates who's not quite sure if they're ready to go off to college or not, you know? So this is a good opportunity to take advantage of in skilled trades. I have a degree in robotics myself, and I can see where it can help me structure my career. So I'm not, I'm gonna be short-witted, and I'm gonna let her take over.
Thanks, Stan.
Good afternoon, Council members, committee members. My name is Shakira. I am excited to join the Pathway to Progress Students Program. I feel that the Career Fitness Camp is aligning directly with my career success goal of becoming a developer and contractor in Pontiac, with the AAT, which is Attitude, Attendance, and Teamwork Approach, encouraging the revitalization and growth of the city, with the end goal benefiting all. Let's build back Pontiac, one student at a time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pro Tim Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Jones, how many slots do you have open and how many are filled at this moment?
Okay. Our goal, when we do the camps, we usually would take small groups, and it's usually anywhere between 10, was between 12 to 10 in a camp at a time. It's a two-week camp, and right now, this camp, we have started with 10, and we're down to six, but that's nothing. We're not bad, we're not mad about that. We're going into the last week of the camp right now, and six of the 10 is hanging in there. We've got a new camp that's gonna start November 9th, and we'll probably be looking to start as much as 15 at that time.
Okay. And my second question is concerning, do you guys take formerly incarcerated individuals?
We will. I would tell you about the skilled trades, the actual registered apprenticeship, they do have some requirements as far as what their past was that could be scrutinized to some degree, but they will accept those returning citizens.
All right, thank you.
Any final questions or feedback, Councilwoman James?
Is there an office somewhere? Is there, how can a person that is interested in the program that she talked about, how can they get in touch with someone? Is there?
Yeah, I can give you-
Is there an office?
You may see flyers, you see flyers going around, and they got QR codes on them. That's the best way. But if you wanted a contact number, that number is 947-517-5272. That's to Pathways to Progress.
Is there an address for Pathways?
No, we do most of our training online, and we will actually do PT, and that's either at a gym or at a track. Now, when we get the actual program going here in Pontiac, it will probably be located at one of the locals, which is either 1076, that's on Jocelyn, or 653, or on Walton. It's closely aligned with union registered apprenticeship programs, but here's the catcher. We realize everybody coming through the Access For All program will not be just pointed directly towards the registered apprenticeship program for the union. They don't have a problem if they take another route. So I want you to know, if you notice one thing about these young people, they're not necessarily those ones fresh out of school. This is Access For All. We've got people coming to the program in their 30s, in their 40s. This is an opportunity, if you really want to commit yourself, you have an opportunity to come and learn a trade, and they're willing to train you.
Any final discussions or questions? On behalf of the City of Pontiac, thank you for your time, but also, more importantly, for the work and the investment by State Representative Carter and all those organizations.
Yeah, as our person, Mr. Randy Carter, he's also on the product team, and Mr. Doug Smith, he's right here, has been connected with us, the GPCC, for where TDC was born, and I'm glad to say he's supportive of the workforce development work we do. I just want to say, thank you, Council, for this opportunity. Thank you to the citizens of City of Pontiac. We hope that you reach out, because our next camp is scheduled for November 9th, and there will be limited seating, but we will have some follow-up from there. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Let's give them a hand. We are now at Public Communications. Just some quick hit information and status updates on major items of business for us citizens. A, the City Retirees Enhanced Pension Benefits Court Proceeding Status Update. All impacted retirees have received a mailing on the proposed amendment and next steps. From that mailing, there is a deadline of November 17th if someone wishes to submit in writing any intentions to object. The federal court has scheduled a hearing beginning at 2:00 PM on December 9th, 2025, at the Theodore Levin United States Courthouse, 231 West Lafayette Boulevard, courtroom 767, Detroit, Michigan 48226. The purpose of that hearing is to help the court determine whether the proposed Second Amendment that the city council and that the CIPRIA organization has voted in favor of on the terms set out in the Second Amendment is fair, reasonable, and adequate, and in the best interests of the class, and whether to give final approval to the Second Amendment. So preliminary approval was received in September. All communications have gone out to everyone impacted. There is a deadline if someone is going to object or wishes to, you know, file an objection, they must do so in writing. If they're saying they don't want that pension enhancement, or they have objections to those expansion of benefits or coverage, and that agenda spells out the December 9th final hearing scheduled. B, Bodet Park on the city's south side, those bathroom renovations are on track for completion in the coming days. C, on the city's new youth recreation center, that construction project has begun. There was a groundbreaking event the administration organized at the beginning of the month. Fencing is in place, building permit approved, site work is underway. D, not great news, but impacting the city of Pontiac. The federal administration, President Trump, announced intentions to not proceed with some federal funding regarding hydrogen fuel research. And following that announcement or indication, General Motors announced that their hydrogen fuel cell research and production, they are ending it, in part because of that, I imagine very directly because of that federal decision that did result in some layoffs at the Pontiac GM facility, that hydro tech program, the research was happening here in Pontiac, the production was slated for elsewhere in Metro Detroit. No exact number was announced, but just want to make sure you knew that unfortunate information about General Motors and their footprint in the city. The bulk of their employees that still remain are still there, but wanted you to know about that hydrogen fuel cell production and research ending. E, you heard from the clerk about the municipal elections taking place, that'll happen before our next city council meeting. F, the planning commission meeting that had been scheduled for November 5th has been canceled. The administration and staff shared that, so I want to make sure everyone in the community is aware as well. No planning commission meeting, November 5th. The next city council meeting is November 10th. It's a Monday, November 10th, at 6:00 PM in these chambers, and the purpose for that change is because Veterans Day falls on a Tuesday this year. City Hall will be closed that following day, Tuesday, November 11th, in recognition of Veterans Day. A few other quick public communications, although they are not printed, want to make sure you knew. The community development director for the City of Pontiac, Rachel Lockren, her last day with the City of Pontiac is this Friday, October 23rd. We wish her well in her new role running the Village of Franklin as the village manager. Pontiac Youth Recreation has a movies at City Hall this Saturday, October 25th, gathering at 7:00 PM. The double feature for Hocus Pocus 1 and 2 begins at sunset. That is free to all Pontiac families. There are a number of trunk-or-treat events happening in the Pontiac community in the coming days, including tonight, right now at the library. October 25th at 2:00 PM at the American Legion. October 25th at 3:00 PM at Franklin Road Church of Christ. October 26th at 5:00 PM by E. Community Outreach Services at the UWM Sports Complex. October 26th at Welcome Missionary Baptist Church. October 30th by the Oakland County Sheriff at M1 Concourse. And October 31st at Valentino's Diner. There may, of course, may be others, but those were all that we could track down so that everyone knew about those family-friendly, free trunk-or-treat gatherings in our city. And then finally, happy birthday to longtime city council meeting viewer, Estelle Marshall. Ms. Marshall turned 101 years young yesterday. Happy birthday to her. We are now at second side of the agenda, public comment. Pro Tim Carrington, any requests?
The first comment would be from Ms. Joyce Hawkins. This was emailed to us. To Mayor Tim Grimal and the Council Chair Mike McGinnis, and to all the council members, I'm writing you to, I'm writing to you because of a statement that was made by one of the council members in a council meeting on October 7, 2025. The thing that I would like to know is, do the United States of Americans still have the right to freedom of speech, or are we being censored? According to the First Amendment of the United States of America and its governing laws, it gives every citizen the right to voice how they feel. Whether you like it or agree with it, a person's opinion, they have a right to express it. But it's not the opinion of those persons that bother me. But it was the manner in which Pro Tim William Carrington handled those people who responded to the city's agenda. It appeared to me that his harshness and the way that he responded seemed to be intimidating. In my opinion, we as citizens of the United States of America, and by the First Amendment, was given the right to freely state how we feel, and you, Pro Tim, took that right away from some of the citizens of Pontiac in that meeting. No matter how we feel about what is said, as a council member, you have a responsibility to give a people of Pontiac the freedom to express their thoughts and ideas. Every person in Pontiac has a right to challenge the items on your agenda, even if you don't agree with it. Secondly, there was a statement expressed by a resident that senior citizens died without the help that the stipend would give to retirees, that the blood was on the council's hand, and Council Lady Kathleen Lee James stated that the council had no control over the retirees' stipend, negotiation, or its accountability. That is not true, but in fact, they did have room in the facilitation of how the information was given in the City of Pontiac retirees and their beneficiaries. For almost three years, you said in the council meetings, did not consider retirees as a priority. That is the first thing you did to compound the suffering and disappointment of the seniors by allowing them to be last on the agenda. The seniors came to the city council meetings, and you council members allowed the seniors to sit there four hours and late into the night before they could speak one word or address their concerns. It was not until Melanie Rutherford stood up and brought to the floor a resolution that would hold Tim Grimal accountable to overseeing the negotiation and holding him accountable for the misinformation the mayor was giving. Melanie brought a resolution to give a senior's back pay and a stipend each month of the retirees and their beneficiaries. That part is heartbreaking, is you knew that the mayor was deceiving the City of Pontiac and retirees as well as the city council. You knew that Tim Grimal was not being honest, and you allowed it to go on for three years and eight months. I repeat it, it was three years and eight months before you decided to hold Mayor Grimal accountable and make a resolution that would help navigate the retired negotiations. It was then that you moved the retirees to the front of the agenda. So City of Pontiac mayor and council members, you do bear some burden of not being aggressive in overseeing or keeping the city updated to the activity of the retirees, and for that, you should be ashamed. City council, you stayed silent when you should have been advocating for retirees. Shame on you. That concludes Ms. Joyce Hawkins' public comment. Mr. Marcus Baldwin? Is he here? Mr. Paul, is it?
Stupla.
Stupla, okay.
There's a nice folder here that doesn't belong.
Let's put it to the side, we'll make sure he gets it.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Paul Stupka. I've lived at 104 Winona for the last 37 years. I wish to speak about the history of retiree healthcare. My comments tonight came because of a recent vote to increase retiree payments. I retired from the City of Pontiac in 1999. In 2012, my health insurance and other benefits that I had been promised were taken away from me. Imagine, at age 60, and having survived three cancer surgeries, I suddenly found myself and my family without health coverage. In 2017, the city introduced the VIBA Plan. Like everything else, it has to be voted on by city council. I sat in this very audience during that vote with my youngest son, who was also affected, and the vote was tied because some people had to abstain. The deciding vote came down to Councilman Kermit Williams. He voted to affirm the resolution, and the VIBA Plan moved forward. My healthcare had been returned. As a senior, to lose your healthcare coverage is just when you need it, goes beyond cruel. I want to thank Kermit Williams and the other members of the council from 2017 that voted to do the right thing. We are all told that all politics are local, so I must take a few moments to comment on recent events here in Pontiac. Unfortunately, many times, political decisions favor the rich and the powerful. Recently, I've witnessed that here in Pontiac, when special laws that were made for all of us about the noise ordinance, but were changed for the M1 facility over the objection of area residents. Now, I live on Winona Drive, which is several miles away from M1, but when I sit on my deck, which is opposite of where that sound would come from, I can hear the noise. The explanation that I heard for the special conduct for them is pure fantasy and does not stand up to any real scrutiny, or doesn't make any business sense. I can name many other projects that we, that we were sold one thing, and then, when it came down to it, we ended up living with much less. The Silverdome is a prime example. The rich and the powerful benefited, and we were left with the bill when they left the city. There's no place here for midnight deals or quick votes.
That does conclude your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Renee Beckley?
Pontiac, what do you see or don't see? Do you see the M1, I'm sorry, the Martin Luther King Bridge not done, closed for four years? A major hospital ride. You see that, don't you? Do you see Pike Street right here from Martin Luther King to Woodward Avenue, still a crumbling road that tears people's cars up? By the way, that's in Mike McGinnis district, and so is the Martin Luther King Bridge. Not done. The retirees just left here. They've been fighting for their money, I guess it's 2021? Is that the right year? Is it longer? Okay, and they still do not have their money. Give the people their money. That's all they want, is their money. But you celebrate a court case, to go back in the court case, you give them a court case, but they ask for their money. Cut the check, put it in the, I think they can't get paper anymore, so it's called direct deposit. Remember that, it's called direct deposit. Remember that, it's called direct deposit. Ermore Street, not done. It's like going through a war-sown minefield on Ermore Street. Promises, 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 but you have money to tear down the Phoenix Center, but you have money to do the busy streets. People have to drive on the side streets. You tear your curb on side streets just as much as you do on busy roads. This is the work of this council, who I'm seeing of. This seat right here, where Monique was, the lawyer, uh, let's say, uh, auditors like the lawyer to the council, why is that seat not filled? Right here, all these people up here, they cannot negotiate themselves out of the paper bag. I wouldn't trust them for nothing. They need lawyers. So going back to the N1 concourse, that was a complicated contract, which this council, Michael McGinnis, Melanie Rutherford, Melina Jones, Park, William Parker's not here, complicated more, and you tied the hands of the city. Ms. Dorcross, you're gonna have to sue N1 direct. I'm sorry, but I have to say, just get together and just sue them straight up. Okay, so, uh, basically, uh, the, uh, Mike is still not right, and, uh, if you tired or frustrated like me, if you're tired of this council, this is the yes team, yes, 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 yes. All I did was see budgets, yes, 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 approve this, we don't know. Michael sits on the Finance Committee for the council, I guess, where's the money? That money came in for that bridge, you, and in your district, and you, you only hollered twice since I've been here about it. So, that, why, why, I, I don't see any reason why they elevate you. So you can't do it at the first floor, you ain't doing it in the next.
That does conclude your time.
My balance say one thing, Kermit Williams for mayor, thank you.
Can I do that, Ms. Renee? We, we need to keep the quorum of the council. Okay.
The city council rules, in the previous council and in this council, is that these chambers and these proceedings cannot be used to advocate for or against electing an individual or a ballot proposal. So, for the remaining speakers, unless you'd like to forego your time, please follow those rules and procedures. Next on the speakers list, Pro Tem?
You can give him there at the end, sir.
I bought my house in 1999, and it needed foundation repairs, which I knew ahead of time, so I checked with the city, I checked with the, everybody about being able to remove all the concrete that was stacked against my house. They had broken up concrete stacked against my house supporting the neighbor's driveway. So I filed for a permit, took all the cement off there. The city came out, said, well, you gotta build something in case it collapses. So we started building what was called, I had, uh, in my permit, the thing for, uh, a retaining wall, but the neighbors there changed their mind, didn't want their property touched. So the city said, build this. We started building it, but at the main, main thing was fixing my house. After a couple of layers, I said, it's gotta be supported. City said, let's keep building it. I said, well, it's gotta be supported as you build it. So it gets built, they give me a cease and desist. By then, we're working on the front of my house, not even, we're done with that side, but they still wanted it built. So I build this, no support, wooden wall, August, they give me a, a cease and desist. So, four months there, no rain, nothing. Nothing's being done. I finish up the work for waterproofing my foundation around that side and in front of the house. I go back to the city, it rains, and the wall starts to tilt. So we straighten it back up, and we go to the city, we say, well, what do you want done with this wall you built that has no, no thing, you know, no anchor? You can't anchor it back against my house, I just took all the cement that you had piled against my house trying to support this broken-down driveway. So, they come out and told me to put beams in front. I said, that's not the way you support anything. I said, that's gonna last about seven years. 2009, it started collapsing. It's, it's been deteriorating and falling apart. This house was gonna be torn down. Instead of being torn down, they stuck it on auction. I asked about buying it. They said, whoever buys this has to fix the driveway before you get any use of the property. Can't use the garage, can't rent the house, can't do any of that. I end up going in for heart surgery, come back out, they rent the house and everything, they've been renting it now since 2013, when he bought it on auction, and they made 80 to $100,000 on a house that they paid 3,300 for. The people that lived there before borrowed $114,000 on the house right before they split the money, took off and left. Her family came back and stripped the house. Now I'm sitting there, my insurance is going up, I can't refinance my house, I got over $100,000 in equity, can't refinance this because that's a threat to my house. It's collapsing still. I have no controls over the neighbor driveway. In 2010-
That does conclude your, that does conclude your time.
2010, they blocked off the driveway for use, but that are still using it.
We have, we have time limits for every public comment, I'm sorry. I know that you've provided, I believe, your contact information as well.
I need somebody to fix this. This is my house, this is my, they're raising my insurance and everything over this.
Public comment needs to proceed for others. Thank you very much for making the time to come here. Pro Tem?
Yeah, I, I wanna come back again and, and just encourage our city to know just how important elections are. This election is before us in the next two weeks. It's gonna be really important that we work real hard to get the numbers up here in Pontiac. Everybody need to commit theirsself. If you wanna see a better Pontiac, you need to be a part of the process of our leadership selection by exercising your right to vote. So Pontiac should be truly committed, and if those people who have a lot to say about Pontiac and you don't vote, you are really not serving this city properly. We want everybody, you got your own right to vote for whoever you want to, but we just need to get our voting numbers up. And just small increments is okay, but if you look at the reality, reality, we have about 30,000 voting population here in this city. And a lot of time, decisions are made by elected officials, sometimes for less than 5,000 votes. Just think about it. So if we can get our voting population up, it represents our city just that much better, and we're gonna do everything we can over these last two weeks to encourage people to get out and vote and exercise their right to vote. And I am saying, as an active person in the community, that's the most important thing you can do, is make sure that you get out and vote. And I'm saying, not only you vote, but make sure you get your whole family out to vote, get your neighborhood out to vote. We need to do record numbers in voting this coming election, November 4th. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Carl Wilkins?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I usually say a little bit more with that, but I'm laying it there. You know, I'm very much appalled this evening. I wasn't gonna say anything until I came and looked at this agenda. First of all, Oakland County came here and boasted about how they were going to bring work, uh, this Phoenix Plaza project and disseminate work here in the city. None of you and no one in this audience can show me or prove to me that there was anybody from the City of Pontiac that was on that project from the demolition start to the ending of it right now, that did not get a piece of that action, over a million and a half dollars that was given to Adamo Recking. Now I'm looking at the agenda, and I'm looking where Adamo Recking went over in this neighborhood, this hand, was hand-given a job to tear down a school, Adamo Recking. Now I'm looking at another item, uh, item I, uh, the city wants to turn around now and give them, uh, some kind of a, a support services arrangement. Where was the bid at? What I'm saying to you, council, tonight, is that Carlton is trying to put the nail in the coffin, but the coffin is still open. And I need you folks to understand that these, this contractor and these contractors that come to the city and bid this work and don't try to utilize city base, then you guys are not doing your job, because you have to put some nails in the coffin. Now, I'm asking you tonight, don't approve I, uh, uh, item I on the agenda because it wasn't properly put out for bids, number one. Number two, nine, 10, 11, and 12. When have you ever heard of a service contract given to a company called Z? One letter in the alphabet. Who is Z? I mean, that don't even make sense. If a contractor can't put his name on, on, on his bid form, then, then what's going on here? How are you guys accepting this kinda stuff at the podium up there? It really bothers me a lot. I wasn't gonna speak on this, but I want to have a meeting with the mayor and you, Council President, as soon and as early as possible that you guys could have me in your office to discuss these issues, because they are not fair, and they're not going down to the benefit of the city-based contractors that even Carlton, uh, Jones is trying to put together. You, you folks here in Pontiac, your kids and daughters, your sons and daughters and, and, and so on, they're not gonna get a piece of none of this action in Pontiac, because we don't have the right people here to make it happen. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Johnson.
First, I give honor to God, who's the head of all of our lives, to this honorable body and the mayor of the City of Pontiac. Pontiac, I'm asking you all to please, please get out and vote. I want to tell you about a lady, and I got a short period of time, why I sit as a voter protection woman. In 1959, a lady in Birmingham, Alabama, she was just a little kid, and they turned the water hose on the children there to make sure they be able to have a right to vote. They marched with little kids at first to get the right to vote. Those kids was used to be able to put the right to vote together, and that woman now, it turned 65. And I'm telling you, for a woman, that's the reason I fight for this city and the people the right to be able to vote. It's embedded in me, and I'm asking this city to please come out and vote, because now we still have somebody in the White House that's gonna take back rights, where I was a little child, used from a child at the age of three, and could've been in the bombing with the rest of, as my grandfather died, and I watched and could not be there, and I would've been the fifth child in that bombing if it wasn't for my grandfather dying. I'm pleading to this city, because we have a president sitting in the White House to peel back all our rights to vote, as well as now taking back people food stamps and can't eat. What is Pontiac gonna do if you all don't get out and vote? Yes, I work hard to make sure that Pontiac is recognized first before I travel the state of Michigan, and I'm asking you all, in this time of need, please follow me to the polls.
Uh, thank you, Minister Taylor.
Good evening, and as we well recognize from other comments, that the November 4th election will soon be upon us, and this meeting, this evening, is the last city council meeting before that vote in which it will be decided, uh, what will be the composition of our city council and our leadership going forward. And although that time is well upon us, and I know some of you are consumed with campaigning for some of those seats, I do want to continue to encourage and to urge you to finish up the business of your term, uh, even though you're close to when this change may happen. But it's still important that some of those issues that you have been working on and that were possible for all the three years and nine months you have been there have still not been resolved, and most of those relate to the benefits that could've been delivered to our small businesses and to our citizens. So, CIPRE issue is being solved now, and glad that was finally, you put your foot down and say, hey, look, get out of this lawsuit and get this thing settled. All right, you did that, and you realized you had the power to do that, and it took a while before you did that, because for a while, you were just asking questions, they weren't being answered, and you were just being ignored. So it was going on and on. So I ask you not to do that in terms of the remaining issues, and, uh, two of those that I have time to mention are, number one, the ARPA money, the ARPA money. And the part of that that still seems to be locked up, and I know you asked questions last week, I don't know whether you asked, got the questions answered, but the part of it seems to be locked up is not the money that was paying to all the outside contractors, I mean, that seems to be taken care of. The part that's locked up is the part that was to go to our small businesses, and we got lots of those, because even though a second round was promised and never was delivered, and a lot of our small businesses never even knew about it, and never had the chance, and that, that was very hurtful, for the fact that we worked so hard to get that money, and it could've offered so many, so many more businesses. And the other thing is that the home repair program, um, I got the list finally of the awardees to it, but it's, was kinda mixed up with the CDBG, so I'm not sure how much of that, uh, ARPA money was really spent for, uh, our homeowners, who, as we see, lots of homeowners now in this era of the, the costs arising, are having trouble maintaining that home. That $25,000, I wish I'd been able to go to a lot more of the homeowners, and that would've sustained a lot of people who are going to be confronted now by the rising costs and the taxes and things that are going up, that will make some people harder, uh, have a harder time sustaining, uh, their homes. So I just ask you, even though it's a few days from the election, and, you know, many of you will be turning on to other opportunities, uh, I still ask you to follow through on the business and work of your term this time.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman.
Good evening, Mayor Grimal, Deputy Mayor Stevens, Council President Mike McGinnis, Pro Tem William Carrington, Councilwoman Kathleen Lee James, Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Rutherford, Councilman Goodman. Today, we are close to making a decision for our future. What Mr. Jones talked about today in the presentation about having pathways for economic freedom and sustainability is what Pontiac needs. A lot of people have focused on the past and how we came out of receivership and how the City of Pontiac was for sale. And so everybody talks about the retiree issues. At one time, we had 2,000 city employees. When I sat on that board, we went down to less than 200. We used to have a hospital, we used to have a Silverdome, we used to have seven places for our kids to play, four city-owned community centers, two boys and girls clubs, and a YMCA, and I went to all of them, and I ate at all of them. Those were great times in the City of Pontiac for me. And now, as we are on the precipice of turning the page, what will Pontiac be? Will we make our city in the county's image, or will we make it in the image of what we can be? Can we really show the people of this country that Pontiac, with all of its diversity, can be a city of revitalization without being a city of gentrification? And I think we can do that. The people who love this city, who have believed in this city, who have given their blood, sweat, and tears, and even their lives for this city, believe the same thing. And now it's time for the people of Pontiac to stand up together. Regardless of who you decide to vote for, just vote. Regardless of who you decide to support, just support. This is the time where the voices need to be heard in our city, and we can do this together. Because we have to show not only the state of Michigan, but the United States of America, there is a place where all the people can get along, and that place is Pontiac.
You know, I hope that this will be the last time that I have to come to this podium to dispel any untruths as it relates to the 10th council on what actions they took. As it relates to the retirees, it was the 10th council who put forth actions to continue the retirees to receive the $400 supplement and adoption of the amendments to GERS ordinance, which are now before this council. I want to personally stop the bold-faced lie that Kermit Williams did not vote for the retirees. That is an unmitigated lie. On every occasion that arose from August the 27th, 2019 until December the 28th of 2021, Kermit Williams voted in affirmative to extend supplemental pension payments for the members of the general employees retirement system. It's public record, check it out. Get the facts and stop listening to lies. August the 10th, 2021, voted for $8 million to be transferred to the city ordinance 2384, the opt-out payment for retirees in a time in the tune of each retiree who opted out of $20,000 if they didn't want health care insured. Kermit Williams voted for that. October the 27th, 2020, it was Kermit Williams, along with members of the 10th council, that voted to extend the $400. Councilwoman Miller and myself had to abstain because we directly benefit from that ordinance. That was the, that Mr. Subka talked about. It was Kermit's vote that pushed us over. So, the next time you see Kermit Williams or a member of the 10th council, tell him thank you. Cause I most certainly will. Kermit Williams supported and believed in the retirees then and now. I also want to ask this council to do a presentation with the retirement system board so you can get a clear understanding of how this thing is going to be panned out. It is a lot that has to be done for this. You have over millions of millions dollars that have, you just cannot just dole out money. It is a process. So, I am going to ask this council to have the retirement executive director and our attorney come before and explain to you the process so we can stop having all this miscommunications. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Waterman. Pastor Kathy DeZerl.
Well, I've changed what I was going to say three times tonight already. First of all, I'm old enough to remember when you couldn't vote if you were black or brown. And you fought and you died. I lived in Little Rock, Arkansas, when the school was integrated. I've lived in New York, Boston, and Detroit through a lot of integration. I've watched it change. You have the right to vote. Get out and do it. When I hear people of your color say to me, they don't care, doesn't matter whether I vote or not, they don't care. You live in America. The only thing that makes us unique is that we still have a right to say something, whether it happens or not. That's another issue, but you have the right to say it. Please get out and vote. It's important. On another note, once again, Galloway Park's been ignored. I'd like to know, did the money that we got for that park, which was substantial, did that go to the county? Or is it sitting in the bank in Pontiac? In which case, why can't we get our park started? In my hand, I have a book, very pretty book, it was written by two women. It's called Fear, Fortitude, and Future. It's written by a lady, and two ladies actually, Lori Goldman and Cindy Cook, who started something that many people in Pontiac are familiar with, Fem's for Dems. Now, everybody in this city knows I'm not a Democrat, but I fight hard for the Democrats in this city because that's all we have. So, we fight for the right to vote for people, not just parties. And Lori and Cindy have written this book, what she called her, her walk, from doubting herself to coming through to having a, a huge impact on the Democratic Party in this area. Started Fem's for Dems, she and Cindy Cook. This book is available, and you can all buy it. And you should, it's a good book. I had another question tonight. Why do we vote to celebrate Veterans Day? It's a federal holiday. We don't vote to celebrate Christmas. We don't vote to celebrate Halloween. Why do we vote to celebrate Veterans Day? I've got a husband and two sons who are veterans. I find that insulting.
Thank you, Pastor DeZerl. Ms. Lori Miller.
I want to first start off by saying, got the rain almost kept me home, but I couldn't stay home because I have some things to say before this election. The first thing I want to say is that, you know, there, this is the 11th council, and I probably, what did I start, Renee, maybe the fourth council, what, Baltimore, fourth council, I started coming down here, about the fifth, sixth? Of all the council people that we have had, one thing I don't never want to do, Susan Shoemaker and all of them, I know all of them, and I used to watch them, is that you never go back and talk about what they did because you don't know what you got to do until you get to put in those seats. And sometimes you make decisions that hard, but you got to make them. And I will say this, they listen to the people. And Mr. McGinnis, I'm going to call you out, I'm just going to say it because it offended me. This gentleman was talking about his house. That's something that all the councils had prior to this council, that we let them finish their conversation. It's just dignity. It's just, just think about it, it's their meeting. You talk all night, can't they have an extra few minutes? That's something I want to see on the next council. Give the people a chance, an opportunity to finish their words. It's not going to hurt. There's no law. Actually, maybe they should take it to five minutes. But give the people time, this is their meeting. And that's what I'm on the street fighting about, campaigning about. I have on green, I can't tell you I'm white, but I wear green. With that being said, Pontiac, it's time for a change. I have been coming down here for three years and 10 months. I was on the council, I never left my seat, I've still been on the street. Got off the street yesterday. See, I don't talk it, I walk it. And the people are dissatisfied, they're disappointed. The reason they're not voting is because they're so sick of this hypocrisy, this, uh, going doing backdoor deals, you don't take care of them. They're not stupid. Where's the money? Where's it going? No bridge, everything started happening at the last eight months. Now, we got a rec center. Now, we getting the bridge worked on, we got it, well, got it on the agenda tonight. Oh, GERS is coming about. What else is missing? Oh, and I, and I have, I have publicly put it on record that we left this last council the A, the ARPA money. The worst mistake I think the 10th council is going to do, because we can't now account for all of it right now. Mayor Waterman, you are so right. Those small businesses people have been, they have been doozled. They're never going to get that money. They're never going to get the money. I want someone in here that thinks like me. You might not like everything I say, but you know what? Anybody in Pontiac know, I'm about Pontiac people. I'm a servant. I know I was born to be a servant because it ain't never about me because I don't worry about nothing. The people need to be served, not for their own interest, not trying to get a backdoor deal, call it, turn up the disciples on people to the south side because they got a better deal for you. Think about what your people, I live next door to these people. We need sympathy, empathy in this city, and I think we can get it with a new administration.
That does conclude your time. Uh, thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Darlene Clark.
Good afternoon, council, administration, and Mr. Garland as well, and to the people of Pontiac. I want to address the issue, uh, I hope I have enough time to address it, but I want to start off. I want to address Kathleen, um, councilperson Kathleen James, um, Mr. William Carrington, and President Mike McGinnis. Though you quite don't understand the system of what the people are feeling because your ears are shut off, though you choose not to address the issues at hand that the people come up, these people see this, the people of Pontiac and other states see what you are doing. You want to say that you didn't care, Councilman James, but let me tell you why we say you don't care about what happened to the retirees. You had three years and 10 months to address this issue. Like others before me have said, you had the last hour, you choose to come here and address the issue, and it's, it's not even a done deal at that time. Yes, my lady refer, she put, uh, I'm sorry, I apologize, council referred, she put, um, administration and council on notice to address that this back pay would be given to the people. In negotiation, that back pay can be taken away and the $400 to be given. So, nothing's actually guaranteed, but your actions have shown the people locally and out of state, your example of what you feel of the people. Mr. Carrington, you cannot censor anyone who choose to come to this podium. I too, as a resident of Pontiac, and I too do pay taxes. I've been here longer than, I've been born and raised in Pontiac. I voted for the system inside of Pontiac. And you, President Mike McGinnis, you have the right as the president of the council to straighten out where you see that your fellow councilperson is overstepping his boundaries, and that you don't do. You allow certain things to happen upon this council that the people see. Uh, back to you, Councilman James, you tend to agree with some of the things that the people are seeing, but yet you turn around and you vote against what you, you so publicly put out there. You walk both sides of the street, and the people can see that. You, Councilman Carrington, you hold your head down low and understand, not hear none of your people in your district, and you think, okay, I'm going to make it better the next time. But it didn't get better, it only got worse for your actions from the last council meeting. The people have seen this. You, President Council McGinnis, you are up for election to say whether you're going to be mayor or not. But the problem is if you cannot hold your tongue for a second to hear what the people has to say and not be so long-winded, and the people seeing you to your face, you are the most long-winded person that's here in council, but yet you have no respect for people who come to this council, meaning to express their thoughts. Now, this is one thing that's very disappointing tonight, which you got, all the council people have showed. I take that back. President Mike McGinnis, you have showed the residents of Pontiac and out of state. This man came to you for help, but yet you told him this time was up, but you didn't give him a direction, what he should take in order to solve the problem.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. That concludes, uh, public comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leslie, before you leave the room, we have the mayor of the city of Pontiac and the deputy mayor of the city of Pontiac in this room. If they haven't already spoken with you and made sure they have your contact information, that would be the appropriate order tonight. Uh, hopefully that's happened.
We do have our agenda we have to proceed with, um, but mayor and deputy mayor are available here to make sure they've got your contact information so that the appropriate staff members who report to the mayor and deputy mayor can follow up.
Thank you for sharing this with me, uh, for the first time tonight. I believe this is located in Councilwoman James's district. I believe she's apprised with the issue and has been engaged in communicating with the planning staff to get answers. Uh, I followed up on, on that inquiry as has she in recent days. Uh, so, even though we're trying to respect public comment, which is the public's time, uh, we of course, as a city council, want to help the administration, uh, connect the dots and get those answers for the residents as best as possible. Okay. A recognition of elected officials, are there any current elected officials that wish to give an update on their elected role?
Renee Beckley, precinct delegate of the Michigan Democratic Party, Pontiac Precinct 12. In this capacity, I will explain the ballot for the people who live in District 3 tonight. If you're in Precinct 7 and 8, I will go through this, I will just read what's on here. I cannot tell you what and who in this capacity. They help, you're voting for mayor, you're going to pick one, Mike McGinnis or Kermit Williams. Pick one. Councilmember at large, once again, we're going to a Detroit system, meaning we still have, uh, seven councilpeople, one will be at large, that large person answers to the whole city or assist the one, the other six when they're busy. You have Adrian Austin and Sanel Tricale. Pick one. I will skip this section so I can explain further. The library board, you have 12 or 13 people, there's a write-in candidate, her name is , uh, Rashima Howard, you will write her name in and fill in the block if you want her. The other people, you have to pick six, do not pick seven. You will spoil your ballot, you get over six. You could do under six. On the back, turn it on the back, you have a school mileage about some buildings, where I understand it. Yes or no? Yes, you want that. No, you do not. Now, District 3 has some technical difficulties with their council. This says councilmember, the third district, you see no one. They are all write-in candidates. It's three people, I will name them. If you want Kendra, Kenya, I'm sorry, Kenya Earl, you'll shade, write her name in clearly and shade the block in. If you want Michael Goodman, you will write his name and shade this block in. If you want Don Hannah, you will write her name in and shade the block in. You must shade in the block, just like you do everything that's on here that is printed. If you do not shade in the block, this ballot will not count your council or whatever you missed on here. Also, the people with absentee ballots, please turn them in. They sent out eight files of ballots, you only got two files in back. Do not hold these to the last minute because if you turn this in late, say Saturday before the election, if you mail it, it's not going to get here, it'll get here that Thursday, and they will write, it came, but we cannot count that. Only time they can count votes is on election day. So, please mail in your ballots. If you do not understand something, please call the clerk's office at 248-758-3200. That's 248-758-3200. You could also vote here at City Hall, request your ballot, 8:30 to 4:30 in, uh, that's in the morning, afternoon, and you could vote here if you would like to, or vote at the library starting this Saturday, the 25th, 8:30 to 4:30 in the morning. I thank you. I'm sorry. That's, uh, 8:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon.
Are there any final recognition of elected officials requests? Here in number at Agenda Address, Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like to ask you for a point of privilege so I can read our, uh, disorderly conduct rules as well as citizen participation, uh, when they speak. Disorderly conduct, the president may call to order any person who was being disorderly by speaking out of order or otherwise disrupting the proceedings. Failure, failing to be germane, speaking longer than allowed at time, or speaking vulgarities. Such person shall be seated until the chair determines whether the person is in order. Citizen participation in our city council meetings. Each regular and special council meeting agenda shall provide reserved time for citizen participation. During citizen participation, each individual shall address the city council in an orderly and dignified manner and shall not engage in conduct or language that disrupts, makes fun of, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the city meeting. In addition, members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or belligerent activity, including but not limited to the utterance of loud, obnoxious, threatening, or abusive language, cheering, whistling, clapping, or any other acts that disturb, disrupt, or impede, or otherwise interfere with the orderly conduct of any city council meeting. For the last three years and several months, we have been very lax in these rules. So, for anyone to say that we haven't given, uh, our citizens the ability to So for anyone to say that we haven't given our citizens the ability to participate is untrue and unfounded. So in continual, we have Agenda Address. Mr. Cockton Jones, you first on the agenda.
Yeah, there's two items I really want to follow. One, I want to follow up on the whole workforce development area of career fitness camps, access for all, and the whole opportunities. I will say this much, I really started looking at where is it that we have in this city that truly could be a place of learning so our people could really be prepared for opportunities? And it dawned on me, one of the greatest places for learning would be our library. Our library is a place where we could train, where we could really encourage people to come out and participate in learning how they can upskill themselves, how they can really be a part of this community, learn skills with the computer. It could be a real housing point for our community to come and engage. So I really became interested in how our library could be one of these units that could be a real vital point for our city. I think we have been taking that library somewhat for granted. We think it's just to go there and just read books, but it could be much more. If you look in other communities, their libraries have become much more than going and just reading a book. So I have became a champion to reform our library and that hopefully we can start looking at how our library can be a housing component for workforce development. The item I'm talking about on the agenda is the workforce development up under the special presentation. So that's what I'm talking about on the agenda, Pro Tem, okay? Thank you. I see you. I see you. And also, I want to talk about the fact of item number one. We talk about community benefits agreement. All these things tie in together. Community, they tie in together. And I know we can't talk about spilt milk, but I still believe it's a time for this council to not only take credit, but money where your mouth is for helping citizens learn to be a part of this uprising. I'm have to say it, the things I've been coming around here to the city to talk about, we haven't got a dime from the city. Other people can see the need to contribute. The state has seen the need to contribute, but we haven't got a dime from the city. But it's okay. I love this city enough, I'm gonna do it anyway. And other people contribute, but I still think there's an opportunity, and I'm looking forward for the council to step forward. Thank you.
Ms. Carol Wilkins. Ms. Patrice Waterman, it says item eight.
Good evening again. I just wanted to let the membership know, the retirees, that there is a meeting scheduled for October the 30th, 2025 at 10 o'clock. It's a Zoom meeting. This meeting will be with the attorneys for CIPRA to explain to us the steps that are going on as it relates to the motion to amend the settlement agreement. Only retirees who dues are paid in full will be allowed in this meeting. Out of the 900 retirees we have, there are 168 dues-paying members. Those will be the members that will be able to enter this meeting. Again, I will reiterate on October the 10th, 2025, notices were mailed out to each class member. November the 17th, 2025, is the deadline for individuals to file objections in writing. November the 24th, 2025, CIPRA will file a motion for final approval. December the 9th, 2025, there will be a hearing for objections and a prior approval. In the end, I would like to thank all parties. More importantly, the staff of the retirement office, who has worked tirelessly to make sure, once the finalization of this settlement, that your payments will commence immediately. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Waterman. Mr. Kermit Williams? Gloria Miller, item E.
And so I'm not discriminatory, not you just time, Mr. McGinnis, but you, Mr. Carrington. I know that you read the bylaws, but excuse me, and no disrespect, but this is just fact. You shouldn't read the rules. No one on that board have followed none of the rules for four years. It's been a nightmare. Getting up, eating, running around, didn't say anything to your colleagues. So you can't really address the audience, you gotta clean your own house first. I get this out of the street, people tell me, and I'm here, I see it. So it's no decorum, so you really can't call the people out because you're, I have seen this stuff for three years and 10 months. So I take offense to reading that because it ain't no decorum up there.
Okay, I gave you.
Okay, you got me? Okay. I want to make sure that. You always clean your own house before you clean up somebody else. Okay, I also want to mention in regards to E. Uh, okay. E is the election day. Oh, I'm talking to the residents out there. I want to mention that August election primary in the city of Pontiac would go down in history of one of the worst day in history of all the elections I've done, and I've done plenty. This city was in turmoil. People was angry, people left the polls. They just was frustrated, they didn't know where they need to go. And I'm gonna ask the clerk, please have them correct. I'm actually taking it on myself, going to buildings and posting where they need to vote it, so they won't get screwed up this time, my people. Because that was unacceptable. We were out there helping our candidates. We had to stop to help the citizen, to help them find where they go. People were just distracted, so frustrated. Some people said, I'm going home, never gonna vote again. That's why, Carlton, we can't get the vote up. We gotta get ourselves in order. We gotta get ourselves in order. It's no reason for what happened, and I pray that that doesn't happen on November 4. That people feel so disenfranchised that they don't know where to go, that they go home. And also, I would like to say to all, go to A, since you want to know which one's speaking on, in regards to the GURS member, to all the GURS member, God bless you, God knows. That's one thing, you can say one thing at the podium, but God know what happened. So God be the glory, get your money.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Darlene Clark.
So once again, hello, again. And once again, I'm talking to Kathleen James because this matter needs to be completed and needs to be straightened out. This dates that it was given. Councilperson Waterman has come into the podium, she's given strict orders, and she has always, since the time that I've been involved, have came to the podium to address the GURS members and what should have been done. Now, the update that she's given is correct, but this too needs to be said. And I too go to those GURS meeting, and I sit there, the meeting don't even last 15 minutes. But in the meantime, your mayor, Grimal and Parker, Councilman Parker, they actually either don't show up or they're late. And on that note, I brought to the council numerous times, including with Ms. Miller, Councilwoman Miller, of the date and what was happening within the courts. But Councilman James, you guys done nothing. You did nothing, but sit there and look. You didn't ask questions, you didn't say why is Mayor Grimal himself giving up updates when Parker himself is the one, like Councilman Waterman, give update to the public. That was not done by Parker, as of this day, has never been done. So all the updates that's been addressed has now started to be addressed, it was never talked about. So now, that's your action to show how much you care as councilpeople. It's not that someone's picking on you, and maybe your feelings are hurt because you got caught with your pants down. Heck, I don't know what it is. But I will say this, your actions have truly shown how much you care for the GURS, especially at the last minute, in the last hour, in bringing this information forward.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. That concludes Agenda Address, President McGinnis.
Thank you, Pro Tem. We're at number one on the agenda. This is a second reading, adoption of an ordinance to establish a community benefits ordinance. For procedural purposes, I believe this is a second reading that had already been before us before and was postponed. The second reading took place at the previous city council meeting, October 7th. So I don't believe it needs a move in a second.
No.
Clerk Doyle, I'll allow you an opportunity to look that up. But in the meantime, thank you to the residents that participated in the town hall meeting, that provided the feedback, the community conversation about the proposed community benefits ordinance. Pro Tem Carrington and other members of the work group have shared with council that they would like more time to provide more consideration of resident feedback and to finalize, include the language. So that's Pro Tem Carrington's request that we postpone the reading until the next city council meeting. But first, Clerk Doyle, have you confirmed that it has been moved and seconded already for that second reading?
Mr. President, that is correct.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Rutherford?
So I want to make sure I got this straight so that the audience at home hears. We postponed it two weeks ago because we were supposed to have a meeting for the community. We did the meeting for the community. We got language from the executive side saying it was other issues, and now we postponed it again. Is there a guarantee that this is going to get voted on in November or December? I yield this to you because I'm very confused because we keep postponing it, and the people who are, this is actually affected, would like to see this done. So is there a timeline, or are we going to just keep kicking it down the road?
Councilwoman Jones?
My response is to that last statement, I want to mention that the current ordinance in front of you is not the most updated version that we are currently considering. Pro Tem Carrington and I have been working on including a community benefits advisory commission, mirroring the neighborhood advisory council that Detroit has in their ordinance to ensure that community feedback is received on an ongoing basis. But I am certainly not interested in kicking the can, but I want to make sure that the first draft we have is solid, and that is why I'm requesting for postponement.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
So again, my question is, are we voting on this in November? That's my question. So if we postpone it, are we guaranteed to vote on it in November? I want to know so that I have a clear conscience of understanding what's really going on.
Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes, it's no guarantee in anything. The thing is, is that we need to make sure this ordinance is correct and it's a good document. So one thing I want to say is that I'm so tired of this council trying to rush things to the door. We need to work on this, or we got a meeting scheduled Friday morning as myself, Councilwoman Jones, attorneys, as well as the administration, we need to air this out, and we need to get this done. And then we will present it and bring it to the council for full vote. We will try to get it done by our next meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones, for a second time?
Yes, for a brief second time. I do, I am confident that this would be completed by the November 10th meeting. Of course, things may come up, but our work group has been very responsive and with a meeting this Friday, and we are very close to having a final product that I think all of council members would be receptive to. It's worth the postponement, because what's going to happen is if we vote on this tonight, one, it's not ready as it's presented with the feedback that I've included, that I'm passionate about. So that would be a misjustice, honestly, if we were to push this for tonight. And second, we need to receive that extra feedback in the work group, and all council members should be able to review it as well. Because if we vote on it and it doesn't pass, we're back at square one.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
So let me say this again, my question was when we were going to do it. It's not about rushing, it's about we're telling the people we're going to do it, so that's why I asked. I don't understand why people get so defensive, because you guys pushed this to be on the agenda. You all pushed for the meeting, so I have a right to ask when it's going to get done. If it bothers council leadership, then they should probably have done this quicker than now. That's it.
All right, so let's have a motion to postpone, if we're going to debate postponement. Is there a motion to postpone this second reading? Has it been seconded? It's been moved by Councilwoman Jones to postpone to the next regular city council meeting of November 10th. It's been seconded by Pro Tem Carrington for that date-specific postponement? All right, any final clarification or discussion on postponement, although I think we aired that matter? My hope and interest is that it would be adopted on November 10th, but the council cannot move unilaterally. It's a vote of the majority.
Got it.
So that will determine the timeline as well as pass or failure. But we're now determining whether this matter will be postponed to the November 10th meeting. Hearing no further discussion, no further clarification, roll call on that postponement motion, Kirk Doyle.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Come back to me.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yeah.
Six J's, no N's.
I don't think I was called, but McGinnis says a yes. Oh, okay, all right. So that motion carries as postponed to the November 10th meeting. We're at number 10 on the agenda. It's adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 6, Housing Code, Division 10, Rental Property Regulations, to include a new section to provide for right to renew leases for tenants. It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford. Do you second Councilman Goodman?
Yes.
All right, moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. Any discussion on the motion before us? And Clerk Doyle, it had not already been moved by a second reading, so we're okay, right? All right, so further discussion on this ordinance? It's been around at the full council and at the subcommittee level for a few months. Any further clarification or discussions? Do council members need more time? Pro Tem?
Just one quick question, just for clarity. So if the lease period is less than eight months, Section 5 doesn't go into effect, right? Councilman Goodman?
Give me a second, I'm not actively looking at that part of the agenda, I apologize.
Okay, no problem.
Is there way of me, are there any other questions?
Section 5, this section does not apply under any following conditions. If a lease is eight months or less in entirety. So it doesn't fall into any of the above points in the ordinance. Just wanted to make sure, that's what I was reading?
I would say that you're correct in that reading.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? Any further discussion, any motions, any need for further research or review? Hearing no further discussion and no further motions, roll call on adoption of the second reading, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
Okay, that motion carries, the second reading passes, and the ordinance is adopted. We're at number three on the agenda, is there a motion for adoption of an ordinance?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. This would amend Chapter 22, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 6, Housing Code, Division 10, Rental Property Regulations, to include a new portion of Section 22 to prohibit declawing or devocalization of animals in rental leases. This has been before this body and our subcommittees at various timelines prior to tonight. The main item that I see in the ordinance that still isn't spelled out, at least in the language that I see, is about the penalty per animal. That is something that has a placeholder, it is not filled in currently. So for the sake of time, are council members interested in postponing this to the next regular meeting to allow for? Okay, is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that we postpone this to the next regular meeting, which is November 10th, which should allow adequate time, two weeks, to see what's the most appropriate penalty per animal per the policy preference of this council. Makes sense? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone, any further clarity? Hearing no further. Hearing no, roll call Clerk Doyle on that proposed postponement.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six Ys, no Ns.
That motion carries, it's postponed to the next regular meeting of November 10th. We're at number four. It's a public hearing to establish residential housing facilities district.
What's that?
I was making the motion.
It's for a public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But I'll give you the floor after the public hearing.
Thank you.
So this is something that was on the city council meeting previously, the scheduling of this. So I want to give the floor to the administration for information. This will be a public hearing, as is required under state law with Public Act 237. But we want to give everyone a sense of what's being proposed for the residential district first. Then we'll open it up, close the public hearing, and then council will consider the action and can deliberate from there. Mayor and administration?
Thank you. This, along with some subsequent items, pertains to 28 North Saginaw, the former Pontiac State Bank building downtown. It's the city's tallest building. It's a major linchpin for downtown redevelopment. And this has been a challenging property for decades. It was underoccupied for many years as an office building. It then became totally vacant as an office building. And a developer has taken on the challenging task of redeveloping this property into more than 100 residential units, which is a great way to bring more foot traffic downtown by having more people living downtown. And they have made some important progress in this redevelopment. But it's a very challenging and expensive endeavor to redevelop a 100-year-old office building into residential, in part because you can imagine how a lot of plumbing has to be installed so that every unit can have a bathroom and a kitchen and water supply and to those units as well as sewer away from those units. So it's a very challenging redevelopment and they are looking for some tax incentives to provide some assistance so that they can get this project over the hump and to completion. So that's the nature of this issue and this proposal. And with that, I'll turn it over to our economic development manager, Deborah Younger.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The applicant has requested a PA 237, which is a residential facilities exemption. In order to, in fact, have exemption, a district first must be created. So in order to, before you consider the actual application, we must establish a district. So the public hearing, the first public hearing is on the establishment of the district. The district would be specifically for that property, 28 North Saginaw, specifically. So that's the nature of the public hearing. After you hear that, then we will discuss the certificate for the actual building.
Can you elaborate further on PA 237, the provision that the state allows for it? My understanding is that Pontiac has not engaged in this. This is more, this is more recent.
Yeah, it was only, it's a recent 2022, the PA 237 came about as amended. And so this will be the first time we use it on a project. I do have another project that I, down the road, that I'd like to consider it on. So as I discover additional tools and resources, then we try to make those available to projects that needed to move forward. So this will be a way to move this project forward.
What other cities have been using this economic development tool for residential district establishment?
Detroit, of course. I think Flint has too. Those are two. Muskegan, for sure, has done it. And maybe Grand Rapids, I'm not sure, certain on Grand Rapids, but I know Muskegan has.
So this is about the public hearing for the residential district establishment? And then should that hearing take place and then be adopted, then it would be specific for this application? And we can get more details from there. Any other clarifying questions from council before we open the public hearing? Councilwoman Rutherford?
How successful has the PA 237 program been going in Detroit, Flint, and Ecorse, which they have to use it as well? What's been the success rate?
I can't really attest to that. It's fairly new, so most of the projects are still in there. The maximum abatement period is 15 years. So that, so most of the projects that have utilized it are still within their 15-year abatement period. So I don't have any stats on how successful or unsuccessful it's been.
And my follow-up, my follow-up would be, this particular unit will also be going for brownfields as well? Or just this in particular, is the whole cluster? Because I know, the reason why I'm asking is because Dennis went for the same type, not this particularly.
Right.
But is that going to be the same type of funding resource or tax?
That is potentially the next source of funding. The applicant is here. I've referred him to a consultant to put together a brownfield plan and go for brownfield tax credits. I assume that he will proceed with that application.
And just so that people at home understand, how does the brownfield work and benefit the city?
Okay. Brownfields, up until recently, could not be used for housing in the same way that they could. State law made brownfields available for a housing tax credit regardless as to whether or not there was actual, you think of brownfield, you think of remediation of environmental hazards. The state deemed that any housing could be eligible for a brownfield provided that they make the brownfield TIF requirements, which is completing a brownfield plan. There has to be some remediation of environmental issues, but it doesn't have to be entirely an environmental plan. Brownfield is a capture of taxes that they're captured and then picked, returned to the developer for financing for the project. So in most instances, developers either borrow against the assumed return of tax credits. That typically is what happens. You get a lender to lend against the future tax revenues that will be returned to the project.
Thank you.
Great questions. Any further clarifying questions? So the district, is it one parcel?
Correct.
So the boundaries of the district are targeted for this particular structure?
That's correct.
Located at the southeast corner of North Saginaw and East Lawrence Street in downtown Pontiac. Councilwoman James?
Do they currently have any tax incentives from the city?
The current developer, no. There is, the building had incentives, but it's expiring December 31st. There was an Oprah on the building, which was stopped by a previous developer. That Oprah expires December 31st this year.
And I'm not familiar with the PA 237. It gives, how long is it for or does it?
The max is 15 years.
The max is 15 years and it allows the builder to be able to renovate older, older properties?
Correct. It operates much like an Oprah that you're familiar with, but it doesn't have to be a obsolete building for the residential act. It could be new construction, it could be rehabilitation. I do plan eventually to bring it for a new construction project down the road. So it could be, doesn't have to be, but it is another tool to allow you to look at residential facilities because not all residential facilities will meet the NEZ requirements. We know we recently established a NEZ. NEZ is specific, there are some properties that won't meet the NEZ. This one was not a good one for NEZ, although NEZ is operable in the downtown. So the tool is much like an Oprah. It is a tax abatement of up to 15 years. The current, the improvements to the property will not be taxed for 15 years. And the current value will continue to be paid.
Any further, yes, Councilwoman James?
And so again, the, what is the benefit to the city? So the benefit to the city is that
114 units, right.
Are renovated, then they would produce tax.
Right, there is 114 units contemplated that will be returned to productive use. So you will have people living in the downtown. Hopefully, they will support restaurants and other businesses in the downtown. It's a goal for us to, in fact, see that we have more footsteps in downtown to support the existing businesses as well as to attract additional businesses. You know, you need footsteps to attract Starbucks, not that we want Starbucks, but a coffee house in general. So, so this, the benefit is taking a non-productive, non-revenue generating facility and making it productive and returning it to tax rolls, as well as potentially 200 people or more living in downtown in the 114 units that are available for lease.
Councilwoman?
Does it give us any guarantee in terms of producing that productivity? Is there any guarantee in terms of the certificate itself that if those units do not become available?
The Residential Facility Act does not call for that. We could always look at a development agreement, but it does, Facilities Act does not call for that. I mean, but it's likely, I mean, the developer in all venues wants to rent up and lease up those facilities. I've been in the structure, as have many people. It's a fabulous, rehabilitation is occurring. I think it's going to be the spot to live in, in Pontiac, when it gets on, when it comes on the rent rolls.
Anything for you? Pro Tem?
Yes, I was going to wait till after we do the public hearing, but you mentioned a development agreement. And my question is, is that if that's possible, why isn't that being brought at the same time that you bring this?
We typically don't do a development agreement necessarily on these agreements. But if council, if that's the pleasure of council, then of course, we could entertain that. We typically, they meet the requirements of the PA 237. We file with the state, the clerk files after council passes it and the certificate is issued if, in fact, council deems that. So we typically have not done development agreements on any of past projects. Oprahs or any of those, we have not done development agreements on.
Well, I guess my question is just to the mayor and the deputy mayor, if this is something you guys have decided not, not to do at all? Or is this something, what do other cities do? I'm trying to see what the consistency in, in this particular item when it comes to these development agreements.
I
Mayor?
I defer to Mayor Younger regarding what other cities do, but as she said, we do not typically enter into development agreements under these circumstances. And given the fact that this developer has also received some missing middle dollars from the state, which interplays here in terms of making sure that rents don't exceed a certain amount, I don't see a need to have a development agreement for this property. And I think we want to move expeditiously so that this development can be completed as soon as possible.
The missing middle restricts the incomes from between 80 and 110 of area meeting income, which is quite substantial. So it mostly, it'll be affordable to most Pontiac residents.
The income tax, does the PA 237 district and then exemption certificate impact the residents in a property from owing the city, city income tax?
No.
Okay, so if there's 200 residents or more,
We'll pay income tax.
Their annual generation of income tax is another revenue source.
Correct.
All right, has everyone got their clarifying questions, has a working sense? All right, we're going to open this public hearing on the residential district. So not just specifically about what would be the impact for this, but in terms of whether we as a city want to have a residential district under PA 237 in this specific targeted area. This public hearing is opened at 8:19 PM. You can come to the podium, state your name and address and offer any perspectives, questions, feedback. It's your opportunity, but it must be related to this topic.
Carlton Jones, 1323 Oaklawn Drive, Pontiac. Pro Tem, I think you're right. I think this is the where we can get an opportunity that we're giving something when developer, I truly believe that this need to be developed. And I think if there's difficulty of it and we're going to chip in and give something to make this happen, a development agreement is a time that we can engage to make sure when he starts billing that we have so much participation from our community benefits. There's an opportunity for us to be able to make sure whoever comes in in that development agreement that we include opportunity for Pontiac people to recoup with the opportunity to be a part of the development. So I think that we should push for development agreements when we're looking to get these incentives. But I, I do think that this is a viable project to truly make our downtown pop. Thank you.
Any other requests to speak during the public hearing?
Darlene Clark, 506 Nebraska. My concern, and I understand that the mayor, council, this is the time where you show the people that you have the chain, not the mayor. A development agreement is an agreement that is a binding contract in order to assist with the residents of Pontiac to see what they get out of it and what the person that's, who's involved in this agreement, that's their commitment to the city of Pontiac. Though he make it sound like it should be rushed through, don't do it. Don't do it whatsoever. I'm talking now as a resident, longstanding resident. Yes, I agree with the building. The building is a beautiful building. It's, I grew up all, all the way up until the time it was closed, I've been in that building. The marble is gorgeous, the flooring concept is beautiful. It's truly a historical building. But you don't want the developer to come in and knock down the historical flavor that you're trying to keep with the city of Pontiac. Reconsider, and I respect the mayor for whatever his reasons for doing, but respect the position that you're standing in. This is not his call, this is your call for a development agreement contract.
Rosalyn Northcross, 168 Ashwood, Pontiac. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The residential housing exemption certificate will entitle 28 North Saginaw to an exemption from property taxes for 15 years. That's a heck of an incentive. My concerns are that the city will lose revenue for essential services, resulting in a decrease in revenue, which will decrease funding for possibly public services such as DPW and public safety. The tax abatement can also increase income disparity in the city. Often, an abatement benefits higher-value properties more than lower-income households. And this uneven distribution potentially can displace lower-income residents who cannot afford the higher cost of living spurred by the new development. If this abatement district is granted, safeguards need to be put in place to ensure that the rental housing being created as a result of the tax abatement provides some rental units for individuals with low income who need affordable housing. So I think we need to make sure that that is in writing because often things that are agreed upon and not in writing don't last very long. Thank you.
Any other requests to speak during the public hearing? Any other requests? Any other requests? Any other requests? Hearing no further requests, the public hearing on the proposed residential district is closed at 8:24 PM. All right, so that concludes the public hearing portion. We're now at number five on the agenda. It's a resolution approving the establishment of that residential housing facilities district for 28 North Saginaw, Blackacre Development, located at 28 North Saginaw, parcel number 641429477001. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. The resolution is before us for consideration. We're going to need to do a little tweaking here to make sure that the language is correct. The clerk's office has identified that in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whereas number five, we're going to say, whereas the city council of the city of Pontiac, instead of desires to hold, we're going to say, held a public hearing on October 21, 2025. So that's the amendment, I'll identify the others. All right, let me review this further. Scratch that. Instead of just say desires to hold, we're going to amend that to say desired to hold. Past tense, that's the only change in that whereas. Then the next whereas, instead of notice of said public hearing shall be, it'll read notice of said public hearing was. it'll read notice of said public hearing was published. So striking shall be and making it was. Similarly, the next whereas, instead of saying shall be held on October 21, it will read was held. Shall be, shall be struck, and it'll be was. Then, when we go to the resolved, we'll get rid of the semicolon and and, and make that a period. So there's only one resolved, and we'll strike the second resolved. Is there a motion from council members to make those grammatical and flow changes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman James, to make those grammatical items in the three whereas clauses, and impacting the two resolved clauses. The clerk's office has this in writing. Is there any clarity needed on those grammatical and flow amendments? Hearing no roll call on those amendments, Clerk Doyle, and then we can just discuss the heart of the matter, but that's the changes before us, grammatical and flow.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones? McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay. So now the resolution before us for discussion is approving the establishment of a district under Public Act 237 of the state of Michigan of 2022, for this parcel in question at 28 North Saginaw. So discussion from council members, should a district be established? And should that, this be adopted, then we will have a new public hearing and deliberation on the specific proposal, and the application we've received for an exemption certificate request. But any discussion on the establishing of whether a district is in order? Councilwoman Rutherford?
Not the district, but what I wanted to see in the apartments, that's what I'm waiting on.
Okay, we can discuss that in the next resolution.
I wrote it out. Okay.
But this is on a district. Yea, nay, or in between? Any questions or determination? Hearing no discussion, roll call Clerk Doyle on adoption of the resolution establishing a residential housing facilities district under Public Act 237 of 2022 for that 28 North Saginaw Street parcel.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
No.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford? Four yays, two nays.
Okay. So the district is established. Now we will have a public hearing and a presentation to precede it on the impact of this particular application for such an exemption certificate. What would it mean? What is the administration proposing for duration, financial impact, pros and cons? And then we can hear from the applicant as well, since they have, per their ability, they have submitted this application. So we are able, as the city, to hear that application and see if it's in the city's best interest. Mayor and administration, though, you have the floor to share about the specific application.
Yeah, I want to allow our economic development manager, Debra Younger, to get into the specifics. And then I know that we have a representative of the developer entity here who can answer any questions the folks may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As indicated, this is a request for an exemption certificate. The applicant is requesting a 15-year exemption. There is about 12 million in construction that is contemplated. The building is 14 stories, 138,000 square feet. It is contemplated that we need the tax abatement, along with other financing to make the project go forward. It does have a missing middle, which is a state project, program requiring affordability to not exceed 110% of the area median income. So the units will have to be affordable not to exceed 110 of area median income, as required by the missing middle funds that are in the project already. Again, these deals are difficult. They, many of them take layers, capital stack. So the abatement, as well as brownfield, or in some cases, it's been Oprah in brownfield, or NEZ in brownfield. Typically, because of the nature of these deals, how difficult they are to structure, how costly they are to structure, there's often many layers of financing that are required to make the project go forward. Particularly when you're retrofitting a building that wasn't currently used for residential, it makes the operational costs and building costs much higher than if it's, say, we were remodeling an existing residential building. The applicant is here as well, and he can address, and might want to talk about what you're doing in the project.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, and thank you for having us today, and thank you for having us on the agenda. It's obviously a very important project, not only for us as a developer, but I would argue more importantly, for the city of Pontiac. This is a very monumental building within downtown. Downtown needs that metaphoric shot in the arm, and I believe this project will deliver with more than 100 and, well, 114 residential units. It's three floors of commercial, it's amenities space, and it's two commercial inline units, one of which we have a commitment, a soft commitment from a coffee operator. So we'll have our first coffee shop in downtown in many years. Hopefully, one that will last and do well for the city. And then we have another retail space that is a potential bodega, so a place to get food and, like a small market. We obviously can't do this without the city's support and help, and so far, the city's been great. But the reality is, dollars and cents really speak to the success of these kinds of projects. It's a 100-year-old building. It has every challenge one can imagine. Everything from, you know, substances that were used in building materials back in the day when it was built, all the way through its height, fire safety, coring through very old and hardened concrete for bathrooms and plumbing and laundries. So all of that, all those challenges can be overcome with the right financing structure. And this program will give us the leg up to, to, to get through all that, and to get this product on the market, and really bring downtown Pontiac back to where it should be. And I'm happy to answer any questions the city council may have, or that the mayor may have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, you had a hand?
Yeah. Okay, so I want to get some math before I ask this question, so that we know exactly where we are. The 110%, 10% income percentile in the city of Pontiac is $42,791. Okay. So I'm asking this so that people can hear. It's a two-part question. You said earlier that you guys received $6.9 million, which is the middle income that you guys received. You didn't say it, but I read it in the news. Would that be a fair number that you guys received? But a missing money that you needed for this?
No, the missing, the missing middle program was 5 million.
Okay, it said 6.9 in the newspaper, so I'm sorry.
You might be referring to an article where it says the financing was for 9.6 million.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Transposed it. That being said, the $42,791 is the actual median income. What is the price for the apartments that you deem that are affordable? And I'm asking you this based upon the prop, based upon the apartments that are in the receiving area. So what I'm giving you for example, before you answer, is we have these apartments called Westwood. The actual median income, they use the same thing, and the pricing for that, for a two-bedroom is $1,371.50 for starters. That's the basic bare minimum, no amenities project. What is, my question is, first part, how much is it going to be based upon the 110% income for a two-bedroom apartment in your building?
So the property doesn't have any two-bedroom units?
Okay.
That's number one. And number two, to answer your question, I want to be honest with you, I don't have the answer on that specific income level. There's a very complex matrix. It's an Excel spreadsheet that the state provides us, that basically superimposes the income with the type of unit to determine what the rent, the maximum rent is. Another, just so, again, towards the spirit of your question, to differentiate from the property that you referenced, our, our product is a, what's called an all-gross rent product. So it includes utilities, electric, water, sewage. It includes any kind of property tax proration. And it also includes, in our case, a full amenities package to a fitness center, all the common areas in the building, including a work-from-home lounge for tenants who work from home. And then it also includes a high-speed internet. It's fiber internet to every unit. So tenants will be able to move in without having to establish an account with DTE or Comcast or another internet provider. On day one, they're up and running. And all of that is baked into the rent. So dollar for dollar, it's not the same as a lot of other properties where you would have to put that responsibility on the tenant.
Right. And while I understand that, because I happen to put my other hat on, as being the vice president of the Housing Commission, when we get through these type of deals, we have an average median income. So I just need an estimate so that people say, well, you're not making it affordable. You need to, it need to be veritably explained that it's based upon 110% income. So I need a number hypothetically.
Sure. I can give you our range, and that-
That's what I need.
Absolutely. Just so you know, because of the missing middle program on this property, 70, more than 70 units are going to be actually low income, or middle income, I should say. And the price per month on the rent is going to be between 1,200 and 1,450 a month.
That's what I wanted you to say. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, you answered. I just, because I think, the reason why, and I'm not trying to be belittering, but I need people to hear the reality of what the average rent is, even if you have a Section 8 voucher, because that's in sense, what this is, in a sense, for those properties that you have the 71. So I think it's important that people know what is really real, and what the average rent is, and what the average median is. So we don't keep saying, oh, we don't have apartments for low income, but we actually have to have it based upon what you need to do in this city. So that's why I broke it down like that. And I thank you for answering that question for me.
I thank you for the opportunity to answer.
Mm-hmm.
Can you share what's displayed for the residents, the construction budget? What is that overall budget?
This is, so I'm looking from the top down. It's, this is all of the line items. Now, these are categories, you know, if you were to take an account of all the checks written, it's probably a list five or six times larger than this. But this is the hard costs and the build-out of the actual conversion. And converting a historic building requires pretty much as much, and in some cases, more trades than doing a ground-up.
Can you share for our residents, what's the summary total?
Yeah, the sum total is about 12 million. It looks like 12 and change, over $12 million.
And how long have you owned the building, or you and your team owned the building?
We've had the property, I believe, since 2021, and we've made every effort to get it to the end. Councilwoman James, you had a hand?
Yeah. First of all, I want to say that I think it's a great project, beautiful building, and a great opportunity. I do feel, though, that this project and any project of this nature that comes to the city should have a development agreement. There should be a written understanding of what the city would like to get out of this agreement. And I think, I think the details of that are not ready to be put in writing, but how do you feel about establishing a, a development agreement with the city in relation to this, this project?
If I can be very frank about it.
By all means.
Yes. We have so many restrictions on us to develop this property the way it is. And just going through the legal loopholes of trying to comply with all of those restrictions, including historic compliance, ADA, universal design, the newest housing standards, the newest building standards, it's very difficult to try to maneuver through all of that technicality. And I don't believe it's in the city's best interest to slow us down. I think our goal here, our collective goal, should be to bring units to the market as quickly as possible. Pontiac is a housing shortage, like many other communities in Michigan, and this is a huge tranche of over 100 housing units that are going to be affordable, they're going to be brand-new, and built to the highest spec. And again, in the spirit of being frank, Councilwoman, I'll just tell you, and I say this to everybody, and I, it's, it sounds like a joke, but it's the truth. Nobody loves this property more than we do as the developer. Nobody wants this to get to the finish line more than we do. And we have millions of dollars on the line that are in our names personally. This could make or break us. And so I don't believe a development agreement is necessary to get the means, to get the end result that the city is looking for.
So any clarity needed before we do the public hearing? Any further clarity from council members?
I just want one more, one more thing, and I want to make sure I got this right. And I guess Debra Younger, I need her to answer this question for me, so that we are clear. Based upon this funding, they're on a timeline, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so let's say if we did, it's just a two-parter, if we did a development agreement, could they be at risk of losing the funding they just got awarded that was in the newspaper?
It would, what, the abatement is what we need to, to get online with immediately. What I would recommend, if council wants a development agreement, the Community Benefit Ordinance lays out basically what we would be looking for in a development agreement. I think those standards are something he could meet. It has an affordability, it has goods and service component, and hiring of Pontiac residents. So if, if council is, that's their desire, what we are already working on in the Community Benefits Ordinance could easily be used for this project. But I would recommend that we go ahead and vote yea or nay, because he needs this abatement before October 31st. It has to be filed before October 31st to be good for this year. So.
To follow up on that, so you're saying, like, if there's another brownfield application, sort of a public benefit-
Correct.
-that this project is requesting, that this development would be involving, that would be coming under the timeline of our newly enacted-
Correct.
...Community Benefits Agreement. So a development agreement with public input-
Correct.
-with community benefits and enhancements, that would be as part of that movement versus sort of basically killing this-
Right. I would offer that.
-because this has an October 31st deadline?
Right. I would offer that to council, and I think that the, the components of the Community Benefits Ordinance, even as contemplated now, and even with changes, would be something that we could apply for the brownfield when this project comes forward. I think it would be an appropriate first project to go under our Community Benefits Ordinance moving forward. So that would be my recommendation.
So, so just clarification, as you saying that, I guess, when will this project go under the Community Benefit Agreement? Because I'm trying, I know we haven't finished that, but I'm trying to make sure that, I don't want this project to die as well. But at the same token, I think it's fair that we need some kind of development agreement. And when will this particular project fall under?
We could draft the agreement, you know, pursuant to this action. We could, you know, if council instructs us to enter into a development agreement, then I will draft one similar to what we're contemplating in the Community Benefit Agreement, and I can bring it back.
But I think what Pro Tem Carrington's asking is, in the Community Benefits Ordinance, I'm sure it has sort of thresholds-
Terms. Correct.
And, and that would also be in terms of when that ordinance is enacted, when that timeline starts.
Right.
So because we want to be fair to an applicant, he submitted his application prior to that ordinance being in effect, so we want to make sure we're holding them, just like we did an Oprah at 46 North Saginaw, an Oprah for the Oakland Press Building. And we did not do development agreements for that.
We did not.
We want to make sure that we're treating them fairly. But once this ordinance, Community Benefits, is enacted, it would go into effect, I believe, 10 days after enactment.
Correct.
So it's a matter of any application for any parcel that involves city-owned real estate, or this tax incentive, this would be an example of that. They would be, they would have to fall within that, and there would be a required development agreement and the Community Benefits review process.
That is correct.
Okay. But so, your understanding is that this particular project will have another bite at the apple-
Correct. When they apply for the brownfield.
-that we anticipate will be, should we do our job, we enact that Community Benefits Agreement Ordinance, and then those applications for this and other revitalization projects, should they involve any request for city, city, you know, contribution or participation, then it would be, it would be mandated, it would have to.
Exactly. That's, that would be my recommendation. I would hold them to the standard that's been adhered to in the past. But moving forward, we'll have a second bite when it comes back for brownfield.
Any other clarifying questions before we do, before we do a public hearing on this specific? So the exemption certificate the administration's bringing, what time period? Is it for the 15?
The 15 years.
Okay. 15 years? And would that be starting in the 2026 texture?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone need any further clarification before we open up for the public to offer their feedback questions and to have the floor? Hearing no further preliminary information, the public hearing on the, so an application has been received from a property owner in the city of Pontiac for a residential housing exemption certificate, and this is, of course, for 28 North Saginaw. The public hearing is open at 8:44 PM. Anyone who wishes to speak, please offer your name and address.
Once again, Darlene Clark, 506 Nebraska. So many, so many, so, so, so many questions coming before you. Though you have had this building since 2021, you had ample time to get all your ducks in order. This is one thing, and I, please understand, the Pontiac building is so beautiful. It is a beautiful building. But with investors and President Mike McGinnis, you just put before the people that you gave three developers at the last minute to come here and not have a development agreement to, with them. You don't want to show partiality, but you showing lacks for the, you showing lack- You don't want to show partiality, but you showing lacks for the, you showing lack of consideration for the residents of Pontiac that they get nothing out of this. They, when he purchased this building, he understood that, that, that it was historical. He understood the problems that came with it. He understood everything going forth with this building. There's no historical building that I know, from Indian Village to the biggest building downtown Detroit, or any Grand Rapids or any city, if it's historical, that does not come with financial challenges. But each, each investor should understand that at the last hour, to come into a city like our city and play on the weakness of the people and saying that what we need, what we need is someone to be able to give back all the time without taking. 15 years is a long time. 15 years, and we do not know which direction our city is going in. They understand that it's being gingersified. A thousand dollars for the lowest to 1,200 for the lowest. But he did not say what is that top of the, the very top of the 14th floor, which is a very exclusive area, how much that rent will be. And again, he purchased this building knowing the condition that was in there.
Other requests to speak during the public hearing?
Roseland Northcross, 168 Astrowood. I would just encourage, uh, city council, um, we need it in writing. A lot of things have gone on in the city and, um, developers and have promised what they were going to do. And then when it actually comes down to it happening, it's something different. But if it's in writing, it won't be something different. It'll be what's in writing. So I, I hope that, uh, you can save this project, uh, and, because it's a wonderful project in addition to the city, but I think it needs to be in writing. And whatever that is, whether it's a development agreement or a community benefit agreement, I don't know, that's way out of my bailiwick, but we need it in writing. Thank you.
Carlton Jones, 1323 Oaklawn Drive. I think we're awfully close, but when we, we had the opportunity, when we was establishing this new tool as being an incentive tool or a new district, to put in there that if you use this tool, you must adhere to our community benefits agreements. And that includes, when you start talking about this type of construction, on any project that a certain percentage should be sought to include Pontiac residents. That, that is the way that you make sure anybody who come and take advantage of any of the tools in our city, that it could make sense to, to have them know that they should be reaching out to Pontiac residents, Pontiac contractors, to work on these projects. It's going to be very challenging, based upon some of our income levels, to be staying at some of the more expensive properties. It's going to be challenging. But if we start being able to work on these projects, we can have an opportunity to live in some of these projects. So I think it could be easy right now, even though it's not totally in place, to say to this developer, are you willing and put us, us staple there to adhere by the community benefits agreements of our city? Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Tom Dennick, 451 East Wilson Avenue in Pontiac here. Seven or eight years ago, I came before the city council. I bought a dilapidated building that was beyond its economic use, which meant the Oakland County assessor said it was condemned. And I came here, uh, looking for some building permits, and I asked for an IFT. And I was put through the wringer. The one thing that struck me the most was, that building was for sale for a long time, and nobody chose to buy it. And I did, and I took a risk, and I wanted to be a part of Pontiac. And I remember coming here saying, I want to be a part of your, part of this community. Well, 78 years and all the money and every profit that I've made for the last seven years have gone into my building. And I'm here today because I went to expand the building, and by some reason, they rezoned it to R1. Easy mistake to fix, but I've had to wait eight weeks. My, my point is this, if the gentleman's going to put 12 million dollars into that building in your city, and that building's going to be renovated, and is going to get another 60 or 70 years of use out of it, out of his 12 million, that takes coconuts the size of a truck, because there's no guarantee it's going to work. He's putting his money and his lives, and he's even said it could make or break him and all his partners. So I have a hard time listening to when they say, well, what's in it for us? What's in it for you guys is, that's going to be the keystone of your downtown. I didn't know anything about this project, I was just listening to it. Detroit turned around by Mike Ilitch buying the Fox Theater and putting his money into that. And now, all the years later, we have a vibrant downtown Detroit. So if this guy's willing to put his money on the line, he's asking for a little help, but you're going to get benefit for 60, 70, 80 years minimum out of it. Just, let's not forget that, please.
Chris Northcross, 168 Astrowood Street, Pontiac, Michigan. I would advise that we do have a development agreement. I think, uh, in many, um, he's already taken the steps. Hopefully, if he has his, uh, drawings and some of the other items, uh, a big chunk of that is already done. It's just a statement of some of the, um, deliverables, once that building is operating, that I'm not sure, uh, you know, it looks like it's probably something that we all would agree to, both the developer and the city, but it just needs to be stated.
Other requests to speak during the public hearing? Any other requests? Any other requests?
Yeah, I got, I got one more question. Carlton Jones again. I was quite familiar with what they did in Detroit. Unfortunately, we don't have our agreements all in place. They have community benefits agreements in place. Mike Ilitch and him was, was adhering to community benefits agreements when they were developing Detroit, and they still are right now. So just because we behind, let's don't think that we're not entitled to those things. We should make sure that anybody, not just this developer, when they come from some incentives, I don't care how much they put in, we got to add some more to it, we should be entitled to some benefits in our city. Thank you.
Hello, Jeremiah Williams, 1128 Amos. I just want to acknowledge, give credit where credit is due. A lot of us come up to these meetings, and we complain about how you guys don't consider us as residents first, and you guys have done that today. Now, some may argue that it's political, and some may say that you guys are doing it because the election is near, but I like to believe it's true change. You guys are actually asking him questions and making sure the residents are being represented and benefiting us before this project goes forward. Um, I believe that as a developer who owned this and is trying to bring this project forth, and I also believe that the citizens and the residents of the city and all of our council, I believe we all want the same thing. I would hope so. And that is to make sure this benefits both sides. And so I believe a development agreement is important. And I don't know the legal aspects of it all, but what I will say is that I believe that we have to make sure we're not going forth with these projects and developments so soon without making sure it's on writing. And so that's all I wanted to say today.
Any other requests to speak at the public hearing? Any other requests? Any other requests? Any other requests? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed at 8:55 PM. Uh, thank you very much for those that participated. So, uh, if it's up for, uh, the council's pleasure, we can discuss this matter further if we have a move and a second on adoption of a resolution. A resolution approving a residential housing exemption certificate application for 28 North Saginaw. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
What was the question?
It's, um, we're seeing, after the public hearing, we're going to take up the resolution to debate it further. Councilman Jones has moved it. The question is, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we can discuss now, uh, resolution approving a residential housing exemption certificate. Uh, does Manager Younger or the applicant wish to expound further on their, uh, application and their presentation, in part to answer any questions or feedback that was, that arose?
No. Um, I do want to remind you that his affordability, he does already currently, because of the result of the missing middle money, have an affordability period of 20 years that goes with the missing middle. So the units have to stay affordable for 20 years. So that already is baked into the state's financing, um, that we helped him with that application, um, at the time. So just want to clarify that, there is an affordability tied to the project as a result of the 5 million received from the state.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Rutherford?
So I want to break this down, um, not that I'm an expert on Section 8, but I want to break it down, that a two-bedroom with a Section 8 voucher goes up to the maximum of 1,460. So that means if I have a two-bedroom voucher with Section 8, I can get into this apartment, meaning it is affordable. Now, you don't have to believe me, you can go check on HUD or go to www.mip.pontiachousingcommission to see what the maximum is, which means a person with a Section 8 voucher can get into this place. Secondly, if you make it even more to explain to people, 20 years mean, if they tried to change it illegally, like some people have tried to change it in the past, they have to forfeit the money that they receive, and they have to return that money, meaning you can't change the pricing. Like Westwood has 22 apartments that have to stay, uh, uh, below the poverty level, excuse me, at 110% rate, meaning it has to stay at 1,260 to 1,340, or they lose their tax credits. That's legally binding, that's beyond our control. I think people need to look at it from all contents of it, that a person with a Section 8 voucher can, and you can get to the mic and tell me if I'm wrong, can they not come stay in your building? Sir, put it on the record so nobody say I'm just talking.
We are, uh, we're happy to say that we have a very long waitlist, and about a third of that waitlist are voucher tenants.
Meaning that you are willing and will accept on the record, people with Section 8 vouchers.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the proposal? So, uh, Manager Younger, does, we have property taxes right now that we're collecting on the property when it's, in a sense?
It would stay at that rate.
In varying degrees of obsolescence, meaning it was built in 1928 as a, a bank tower, office tower.
Correct.
We are collecting taxes on a 14-story, beautiful, historic, but not fully occupied, or at this point, not at all occupied, office tower. And it has been occupied at, fully in a long time, sometimes partially over the last 15 years, a little bit. So we're collecting property taxes right now on that parcel?
Correct.
And if this is adopted, we still are collecting that same?
You will collect that same amount of property taxes, of course, uh, going up for, you know, as assessed values go up. But it'll, the base tax will still occur for the next 15 years.
And right now, this building is not generating income tax revenue because there aren't any tenants, residents, or employees that are, uh, in that structure. So if, if there are 200 people in the building, um, you know, depends on their income, et cetera, but we could be talking about 150 to $200,000 in additional income tax generated from this building if it's occupied. Not every res, not every unit has to have more than one resident. Some might just be, you know, solo, uh, resident, et cetera. But help me understand, uh, Mr. Building Owner. Uh, so, a lot of us in the city, we know that it was Chase Bank most recently. So you have a, a commercial, you were using some terms that I wasn't quite familiar with, but essentially, there's three storefronts. There's the sort of signature storefront that was the main bank, originally People's State Bank, then Pontiac State Bank, and Bank One, you know, all the different bank mergers, most recently Chase Bank. And then you have two smaller storefronts, correct?
That's correct. So if you're looking, if you're standing on Saginaw facing the main entrance of the building, you'll see three arches, the large one in the middle, that's the main entrance, that takes you into the lobby, and then that leads you into the back, which is the bank. And that's a two-story mezzanine bank. Um, and then if you go back on the street, if you're looking at the building, on the right side, there's an inline unit. We call them inline units, it's like a, like a store in a shopping center, if you will. On the right, oh, I'm sorry, on the left side of the building, the corner on, uh, where Lawrence meets Saginaw, is a corner retail space. And that's where we're hoping to put our coffee, uh, shop.
So that was Pop's, you know, corner store for a long time?
It was Pop's Party Store, and I don't know what it was before that, but, you know. Nothing's been really successful there.
For almost half a century, it was a hat seller, men's hats.
I'm not that old, but I, I take, I take your word for it.
Before my time, just, just history research. But, um, okay, so then there is tax generation coming, regardless of this PA 237, because there's employees, you know, in these different commercials, structures, et cetera?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so Manager Younger, after the 15-year period, essentially will spike up, and the property owner will have to pay the full increased value of the full renovated location?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, that helps me understand it better. Further discussions on the matter before us. Councilman James?
Yes, uh, I, I approve of the, uh, the, uh, all that we've done, uh, tonight. We approved the project. Uh, but I do, uh, before we approve, or I approve, the certificate, I do want to see a development agreement. I want to see a full written understanding of what we are agreeing to as a city, because we're getting ready to go into a new administration, partially new council. And unless we learn how to get things in writing, and really to make, you know, to, to get something on paper that people can really understand what we are signing up for. And that should be, that's basically what a development agreement does. It just puts in writing what the city is signing up for. Because you've mentioned things that are a part of it. You mentioned the missing funds. See, these are other structures that are in place, but they have, they are affecting, but they're not really, we don't have any documentation on that. We don't have any real paperwork on that. So if we had an, a development agreement that explained out what the city of Pontiac did, why did we approve this, what, what is incorporated in this certificate? I think that's important, to get that in writing. You know, it's, it sounds good, we come to these meetings and we say, oh, dah 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 dah, but nothing ever gets in writing. And then when you, you, we have a new administration, a new council now, you know, was, why was this done? This was done. We need to get things in writing. And, uh, I do, I, I don't think that this needs to impair his timing, because we're all reasonable people, we want to see the project go forward. And, you know, I'm of the persuasion, where there's a will, there's a way. If there's a desire, he wants to move forward with the program, we want to see our downtown, you know, thrive and come alive. And so if we both want that for Pontiac, I, I don't see any reason why we can't work out the details here. I have no problem with approving it, but I do feel we need a written development agreement with this developer, as we need with every developer that comes to the city with a major project. This is a 12-million-dollar project. It's a big project, and I think we need to understand in writing what we are signing up for.
The intent and the impact of a community benefits ordinance of the city will be that, moving forward, it will be mandated. That if there is a city contribution from tax incentives, property, et cetera, I just want to help my council colleagues see the legal exposure.
Yep.
There was, at the Oakland Press Building, an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate that did not require a development agreement, because there was no community benefits ordinance in place at the time. That project is 176 million dollars. So we're going to say, for a different, smaller, more specific, although beautiful, um, development, we are going to hold it to a different standard and will require a written development agreement prior to community benefits ordinance enacted. When that community benefits ordinance is enacted, it's definite, and it'll be for, if there's any tax incentives, it's required. But we haven't been governing- But we haven't been governing in that, we haven't been in that world. So, there have been at least seven instances of different obsolete property rehabilitation acts, OPRA's exemption certificates that this city council approved, and there wasn't a development agreement. And we could debate retrospectively, wouldn't that have been great? But that's why we're saying, and we've been pushing for so long, to have community benefits agreements required going forward. So, Councilman Rutherford's hand was first, then Pro Tem, then Mayor.
91 North Saginaw, no community benefit agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Jones after.
46 North Saginaw, no community agreement. Oakland Press, no community agreement. So, will we be, to the administration, open ourselves up for legality, legal problems if we put this in place? Because this council never, never, never put a community agreement on eight of those properties. So, I'm yielding to the, to, to the mayor, on the record, are we going to open us up for us litigation? Yield.
Yielding has been yielded.
Well, there very much is that real potential here, and it's not just those properties. It's the Webster Community Center, which is owned by a for-profit entity. It's all the Housing Brownfield Tifa incentives that we've approved that did not have development agreements. So, to change the role of the games for this one developer before a community benefit ordinance is adopted, I do think potentially opens up the city to legal exposure.
And...
You yielded.
Can you yield it back?
No.
Okay.
It expires, it withers. But you can come back on the speakers. So, Councilman Jones is next.
So, Manager Younger, you mentioned something recently about the development agreement and that it could be, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but did you allude to the fact that it could be adopted in tandem with this resolution if it amended? If, oh, I lost my words. Did you mention that it could be, it could be considered in tandem with this ordinance if an amendment is made potentially so we don't impede on this timeline?
Right. I, I need this to be approved by the 31st now. If, I can't, if you need to see a development agreement before, but if you direct me to do a development agreement, then of course I can do that. But I'd like you to, if you could, to take the vote so that this project could meet the October 31st deadline. I'm happy to bring back a development agreement if that, if council is desirous of that. But I do want to caution that, you know, we have to be equitable and fair how we treat development, developers.
Absolutely. And one more follow-up to that.
I can come back. Okay. Pro Tem?
Oh, yes. Thank you, President McGinnis. I'm so, first, the council has the power to determine each specific project separately. It's, it's no swipe of, of all projects equally. We can look at each project separately. So, I'm, I'm going to say that. So, if my colleagues want to vote on this project, we, they can. They can vote yes. But don't sit here and try to hit me with all this legalities. We, this, this city has been sued several times for stuff that I definitely say we shouldn't be getting sued for. So, we, we have to stop playing that. Either we going, going along with the project or we going to ask for a development agreement. We have that right as council people here in the city of Pontiac. So, we, let's not, let's not do the legality thing. That's, that's what I'm saying. So, for me, I would like to see a development agreement with this project and any project moving forward when it comes to these major projects.
Mayor Grimal is next on the speakers list.
Well, I do just want to emphasize the October 31st timeline, and it's just really essential that this tax incentive be approved before October 31st in order for this project to stay on track. And if we miss that deadline, we're looking at a whole nother year of delay here. And I think the, the challenge is, we've never done a development agreement for any tax incentive that we've approved. And so, you know, this, this is completely unexpected, I think, from economic development manager Deborah Younger's perspective, certainly from our perspective. And that's the whole point of adopting the community benefits ordinance is so that there is a level playing field moving forward for future incentives that are improved. But until that's in place, I don't know how we single out this one development for that without having done that for a slew of previous developments that tax incentives were approved for.
And each, each application for each different tax incentive, yes, is, can be debated and stand on their own merits in terms of, is this worth the city's contribution? My point is that you're saying as a threshold, the, the determination is, does it or does it not have a development agreement? That standard of threshold was not evenly applied. So, that's a different matter. You're not saying, here's the benefits to the community, I want to be included. You're using the threshold of development agreement, yea or nay. That's my point. I think that's a different ball of wax then. Is this worth the city's contribution? Is this worth the tax incentive? Councilman Rutherford, then Councilman Jones.
So, first of all, I had, have had a complex history with this project. So, this is not me just trying to make something happen. The problem is, is this, I earlier tonight asked for us to do the tax, the community agreement. They said it wasn't done, which could have circumvented this whole conversation, in my opinion. If we had it in place, then we wouldn't have an argument, or we would have a leg to stand on. What I am worried about and continuously try to get everybody to see is we have to treat everybody equally. We can't all of a sudden, in the ninth inning, say, because X, Y, Z. And I have, I have every reason to be on that tip, and I'm not on it. We have to treat everybody fair. And that's all I'm going to say without getting into any other ramifications. If anybody should be trying to cause collateral damage, it should be me. And yet, I'm still trying to be fair because that's what our job is, is to treat everybody equally, whether we like the developer, whether we like the project, whether we want to see it done. And we have to stop trying in the ninth hour to do other things to, because people telling us what we need to do. Yes, we need a community development agreement. We absolutely do. But we also need housing. So, which ball we going to roll with? We can do both, but if we had voted for the thing tonight, then I would be like, cool. But at the end of the day, we could have been done this, and we need to be fair to everybody. And I don't particularly have a skin in the game whether win or lose or whatever, but it's because it's housing that's available. We didn't do this before. Dennis Griffin had his project, did nobody say nothing. It was all crickets. 91 crickets, 46 crickets, Webster crickets. And now, because it's this meeting, and it's just my opinion, and my opinion matters, we going to do this. That's all I'm saying. Be fair to everybody, because y'all weren't saying this when all those projects came in front of y'all. When nobody screaming, give a community agreement. And that's my issue with it. Now, we going to do this. I got a problem with that. And I ain't particularly so great about this project. I'm just being fair. That's it.
Councilman Jones? Oh, I see your hand, yes.
Okay.
Councilman Jones, you're next.
Can, can this project go forward without the brownfield that you mentioned, just under the PA 237?
No. Right now, the numbers do not, and that's what I was going to offer. It's got to come back for the brownfield.
Yes.
The numbers don't work. We need the 237 and we need the brownfield. The brownfield plan is being developed and worked on. It's coming back.
So, we will 100% do this again this year.
You will have a second bite, yes.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Can I add to that?
Of course.
For clarification. Forgive me. And I'm going to speak to specifically Councilwoman James and Councilman Carrington. I don't want you to misread what I maybe stated earlier. We're not opposed to a development agreement. We just don't want, want it to derail this because this is due by the end of the month. We cannot do the project with just the PA 237 that's in front of you tonight. We have to come back for the brownfield. And as early as tomorrow morning, I'm happy to be in both of your offices to work out the details of a development agreement. We're not against it. We're just saying that right now, we have to get this through, this part. When we come back for the brownfield, which we need as part of our capital stack, we could, we will certainly enter, into a development agreement. And I welcome both of you, I welcome everybody on the city council to come and visit the site so you can see what we're doing. We are paying, paying homage to the historic value of the property, but at the end of the day, this is dollars and cents. I cannot move forward unless this goes forward today with a yes vote. And I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, please give us that vote. We will be back here probably a month asking for a different program that we also require, and with that, we can do a development agreement. I'm not opposed to it. I just don't want it derailing today's decision. And I'm really asking you from the bottom, we're talking about 75 jobs on a daily basis for the next year and a half. So, these are, these are the things that are important. We can refine the terms within a development agreement, but I am pleading with you to consider a yes vote for today's agenda item, which is the PA 237. And I'm happy to answer any questions to clarify on that.
I think everyone who already had a hand has been called, but any further discussion on the motion? Okay. All right. So, what we have is a resolution approving a residential housing exemption certificate application for 28 North Saginaw, Blackacre Development located at 28 North Saginaw parcel, excuse me, yes, that's right, a residential housing exemption certificate. This 28 North Saginaw parcel number is 641429477001. Any final discussion or clarification needed? Hearing no further discussion, Clerk Doyle, roll call on the resolution.
Jack? Oh, it was a change that needed to be made.
Oh, thank you.
The tents again.
Yes, yes.
So, we're going to set aside that voting order in the second to last whereas, right now, it reads, whereas the public hearing shall be held, it has since been held. So, we're just going to read, amend that to say, whereas the public hearing was held on October 21, 2025. Is there a motion to make that slight correction? Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilwoman James, that in the, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth whereas, it will now read, if this amendment is adopted, the public hearing was held on October 21. Everyone clear? Very small change, just the amendment. Roll call on the amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay. That carries. We're back to the main motion, the resolution as amended. Any further discussion or clarification needed or further amendments? Okay. Hearing none, roll call on adoption of the resolution with the amendment already incorporated to that small language correction. Roll call on adoption of the resolution as amended. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay. That motion carries. You've met the October 31st deadline, God willing. We look forward to having this conversation, and you can help forge a new path forward with the city of Pontiac on development agreements so that way. And I just want to say as a, as a point of information, it's not that every private development is going to now require that. It's if there's a public contribution, meaning it's city land, a city tax incentive, or other sort of city contribution. If the gentleman owns his private building and he just is going to develop it, it's not going to come to us because it's already zoned, it's our, you know, the financing is all private. It's the public contribution that necessitates that. And so, thank you for that information and that commitment because that'll be an early test case for the new ordinance that is likely to be adopted by this body. Okay. That has concluded. We are now at number eight on the agenda, resolution approving construction contract with Butcher and Butcher Construction for Ottawa Park Cemetery Main Office Building Roof. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman James, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. So, the city of Pontiac owns a municipal cemetery too. In fact, this is for the newer northern one on Dixie Highway, technically, and I think in Independence Township, but Ottawa Park Cemetery. It's a established structure, existing structure. It needs a new roof. Mayor Administration, you have the floor on the request.
Well, I think you summed that up well. We've got two municipal-owned, city-owned cemeteries, one of which is way out in Independence Township. This pertains to that cemetery, and it's to repair or replace the roof there. We have our DPW director, Larry Searls, with us, and I want to invite him up to the podium to discuss this in detail. But this is a proposed contract with a contractor to repair or replace the roof.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. So, yeah, the, the roof has been not in good shape for a while. We, we put the project, we scoped it, we did all the environmental, we did all the historical, we did all the historic, NEPA, SHPO, and Phase 1, Phase 2 environmental. We have the bid spec. We put it out for a bid. We came back with a couple of good vendors, a couple of good quotes, and Butcher and Butcher was the responsible little bidder. And with, they'll meet it, when they meet compliance, if this council votes yes, we'll, we'll have them under contract and get the roof redone as it's, as it's been needed for a while.
When would this project be enacted? When will it be going underway?
Once, once the contract is executed, we'll have a pre-con meeting, and we're going to have to coordinate and be sensitive of the operations of the building. But it would start as soon as possible. There's nothing, there's nothing that says these can't be done in the winter. So, we don't have a, like, set time that we have to wait. We just have to wait for material sourcing and coordination with the building.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? I want to recognize that there's a lot of facilities, sort of deferred maintenance items that you'll see on tonight's agenda. This is not in isolation. This city council, I want to thank all the city council members for being very laser-focused now that we are in a more stable financial position, us trying to play catch-up on the years of deferred maintenance on these municipal structures. This particular facility is a revenue generator. This is still an active cemetery owned by the city and the citizens of Pontiac. Burials are still actively happening in Ottawa Park Cemetery. So, this is not just a, a structure that then just sits, you know, in, frozen in amber. It's very much an active, to your point, they're actively using that building, so they're going to have to work around that to do the roof replacement.
Yes.
Any final discussion on this motion? Hearing nothing further, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Carrington? Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
That resolution passes.
All right. Thank you, council. Yes, that resolution passes. We're now at number nine, resolution approving demolition and construction services to Z Contractors, Inc. for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Support.
It was moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Goodman. He got it in just before you. That motion is now before us. Mayor and Administration, you have the floor.
Well, at long last, we are here to approve a contract for the actual demolition work for the MLK Bridge, the very derelict bridge that is in very tough shape, and not just the demolition contract, but also the construction contract to begin construction of a new bridge in its place. This has been a long road, as members of the public have reflected upon. The biggest task, the most challenging task, was getting the funding for it. It is a expensive project, and thanks to the hard work of State Senator Jeremy Moss and State Representative Brenna Carter, we received $10 million in state funds for the project. Thanks to the hard work of Congresswoman Haley Stevens, we received more than $4 million in federal funds for this project. That all took a long time. And then the design and engineering took almost a full year, which is not surprising for a project of this scope. So, we are happy to say that we are now at the day when we can approve the demolition and construction contract so that we can actually start to see in the coming months the bridge come down and a new bridge go up in its place. And with that, I'll turn it over to our DPW director, Larry Searls.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, this one's great. We had some great bidders, we had some great pricing. We, we did unfortunately extend the bid timeline to make sure all the questions and concerns and suppliers, subcontractor questions were answered for the contractors. The lowest responsible bidder is Z Contracting, that's one of the state's largest bridge builders. Just a little play on the name, the Z comes from the Z sheeting used in all bridge projects. So if you know bridges, you know why they named themselves Z. But it's an excellent team we have put together and this is going to be a great project. It's time and I'm very excited that it's actually here right now.
Can you elaborate on what is incorporated with this approval? The $10 million, $34,000 that includes the contingency. So the bid is 9.12 million, but there is a contingency built in. What are the citizens of Pontiac getting for this investment? And we want to acknowledge the federal and state funding that's helping cover this project, but what is the outcome?
This is the complete demolition of what's existing and complete reconstruction with all new everything of the Martin Luther King Bridge.
And would that also be Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard north and south of the bridge as well? Should?
We have, we have limited, no, we have limited project limits on the road. It can only go so far and still be a bridge.
Okay, understood. All right, further discussion on this motion? Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. So what is the timeline that this, the bridge will be finished?
So it's a two-year project from start to finish. It's because it's going to cross construction seasons. The demo would start now. It, it's really two construction seasons, so 18 months. 18 months would be the earliest, two years is more, most likely the end result.
So we're looking at 2027, end of 2027?
I'm not, I, I gotta go back and look at the timeline. Some of this is contingent on when we get the, what season it is when we can pour the concrete, when we can pour the asphalt. So I, I, I just need to give you a better answer.
Okay, no problem. You can, you can just bring, email the council, counsel that information.
Okay.
Further discussion, Councilman Jones.
You mentioned that construction would start now. What is now, how long after the vote would, I mean, not construction, I'm sorry, demolition?
The demolition will start within a couple of months. It'll be action going on. So in the, in the bid package, they have two weeks to approach the railroad for the final part of their insurances going on their, their permit. From that point, then the timeline starts for the actual demo work. But we, we had to give them leeway because we have to wait for the railroad to, to approve and accept their insurances.
Okay, thank you.
So many people are aware, but just to make the point clear, there is still an active railway underneath this bridge. So the demolition and construction has to work with this very active railroad owned by a private company that has federal government preclearances that predate automobiles. But just to address some questions and feedback that came from residents tonight, this has been a very long process of identifying the issue, securing the funding, working through all this project, engineering design, bid posting, and now tonight with the awarding. And we all recognize that, we all live in the city. But I just want to correct, it was stated that it was four years. No, it's been three years and a few weeks, a few months since that emergency order to close the bridge. But I want to point out, this bridge was built in 1976. This bridge should never, ever have gotten to this deteriorated state that necessitated it having to be closed and now demolished. If preventative maintenance had been done on this bridge through the decades, it's not just one person's fault or one timeline's fault, when the city of Pontiac's financial back is against the wall and we're not in a position to do the preventative maintenance, this is what happens, where the small stuff isn't dealt with and then it becomes the big stuff. So now the underlying part of the bridge is rusted, rusted away and had a 22% chance of failure. So for any resident that said, why'd the mayor close it? It's because he didn't want hundreds of people, you know, tens or hundreds of people to die when a bridge collapsed, which does happen around the country. So he's not, he didn't do it to try and punish or to be short sighted, he was trying to save lives and prevent major, major catastrophe. The engineering firm in 2022, the summer 22, the state requires bridges to be inspected every two years. So the city had been having these inspections done every two years, identifying greater and greater problems with the bridge. The last inspection stated there was a 22% chance of failure. Do I have that number correct, Mayor Grimal? Or in that vicinity range?
I, I don't know the exact percentage offhand, but yes, there was a significant chance of failure and to protect public health and safety and lives, it was determined to close the bridge.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, because you always hear some residents saying, why is it closed in the first place? Why do we have to do that? We're in this position because of the advanced deterioration of the bridge, it does, and it was assessed like multiple times over. Are you sure we can't just reinforce it? We can't just patch it? No, it has to fully come down, fully re-engineered and fully rebuilt. That's the vote tonight is awarding the contract. This, as well as the contract that follows, should that be adopted, it actually would put us under budget. You know, of course contingencies are what they are, but we are on track to be able to have this project fully paid for with the federal and state appropriations that we received. Councilwoman.
I got three questions. Number one, this will go to the administration on the record, none of the bridge money has been spent, that's the first question. Two, it is in a separate account, we are not using this money to pay for this youth center. I'm asking for, just for giggles. Three, this was, you said it wasn't unappropriate, but I want to go even further. On the record, when was the last time that this bridge was inspected prior to you or any of us getting into council? I yield to the administration just for the joke of it. Go ahead.
Mayor Grimal.
In regard to your first two questions, correct. The, none of the money has been spent other than on the engineering services for this bridge. So the money, a portion of the money was spent for the design and engineering services that allowed us to go out to bid because you have to have a design and an engineered design with specifications to go out to bid. So obviously some money was spent on that. But other than that, none of this money has been spent so far and it's all in a specific separate account so that it's safeguarded from being diverted to other purposes. And in terms of the last question, there was a inspection done in our first eight months of office, which is how we discovered just how serious this problem was. Before that, it's a little unclear to me, but I think it was inspected two years before that, or 2020. And so why this wasn't flagged under previous elected leadership, I don't know. That's one end of the bridge, no pun intended. And at this point, we just need to move forward and make sure that this bridge is reconstructed so it's safe for the public to travel over.
Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you, President. I just got a couple of question, it's a 10% cost over contingency. Who will be monitoring that?
We, we will keep that, we'll keep track of all of the funds through our pay application process and all the funds will, it's going to be tracked as part of the grant regardless. We have to keep a close eye on the finances. If we get close to that 10% contingency, we wouldn't, we, we're not going to slow down. We'll come right back to council and let everyone know where we're at.
And my second question, the engineering designers, is it the engineering design team responsible for any cost overruns?
No, the engineering design is already done. We, we have construction engineering services, but the engineering design is already done.
Great question though, meaning like this is not a guaranteed maximum pricing dynamic like the youth recreation center.
Correct.
Anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing nothing further, what's before city council is do we adopt this resolution approving the demolition and construction services for the proposed contractor for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Bridge demolition and reconstruction project? This is a, goes without saying, but for this and future leaders of the city, the residents are very eager to know how it's moving. So even if it might seem like, oh, it's boring stuff, residents want to see the tangible progress being made. So I encourage the staff and elected leadership now and in the future, just regularly and proactively communicate with residents because as a resident, that's what I want to see, that's what I'm hearing over and over, especially those that live in proximity or would travel that area. We want to see that communication coming from city hall about this project. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones. McGinnis.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution's adopted. We're at number 10, relatedly, but this is for the construction engineering services agreement. Was there a motion?
I say motion.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman Jones. This is a resolution to approve the construction engineering services agreement for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Mayor and Administration.
Well, just by way of explanation, so there's design and engineering, which is the actual design of the bridge, the engineering of what the bridge will look like, that's already been done. That has to be done before you go out to bid for the demolition and construction. This is what's called construction engineering, which means engineering personnel in the field while the demolition and construction are occurring to make sure that they're being done correctly in accordance with the designs and specifications for the project and being done in a way that's, that's safe for the public as well as for the trains that have to pass under the bridge during the time it's being demolished and reconstructed. So when we talk about construction engineering, which is what this contract is for, it's for the engineering personnel in the field supervising the demolition and construction to make sure it's done properly and safely. With that, I'll turn it over to our DPW Director Larry Searls.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, this is going to be, we're asking to award to Fishback Engineering Services. Great, a great firm. What we have right now is a, a great team that's just recently trended through a super complicated, successful bridge project. Our city rep, DLZ, worked with Fishback on a crazy bridge project in Ann Arbor. They were successful, so we have, we're very confident we've got the right team. We're going to be able to put together a, a very good project that shouldn't run over budget, shouldn't run over time with the team we have, and we'll give regular updates to council and they'll be coming through Fishback and DLZ.
Thank you. And so this is for $1,475,405, that's the not to exceed cost for the construction engineering services, also paid by those state and federal grant appropriations for the overall project. Pro Tem Carrington, do you have a question?
Yes. So with this project, is this one of the firms that are on an approved vendor list?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion, Councilman Rutherford.
Two questions, Larry. First of all, I know the diligence, first to comment, I know the diligence that you've been trying to make sure that, that we've been fair and impartial, so I appreciate that. My question is, do this, does this particular business owe any back taxes, owe any money as any agreement with the city?
They've already went through all compliance checks and they're absolutely compliant.
And if I needed to see that, where would I find that information at?
I would go to Adam. All right.
My follow-up question, just so that I'm clear and it's on the record, is there a way that we will have people, under this agreement, if we give them the awardee, are they looking to use some of our residents for this particular agreement?
Not with the engineering.
Not the engineering firm.
Does Z Contracting have job openings?
That's what I'm referring to.
I actually could go and check, they're large, they're huge, and the last I checked, they've, they're always hiring.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, so we're talking about Fishback for construction engineering services for this Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Bridge demolition and reconstruction project. Any final discussion? I just want to say thank you to Congresswoman Haley Stevens again for her $4 million plus federal appropriation that is covering this and the origin, the previous major cost as well as State Representative Brenda Carter, State Senator Jeremy Moss, and Governor Gretchen Whitmer. Pontiac received not one but two major appropriations that year, and that was $10 million for this project. So that is funding this particular service and the demolition and construction project. So thank you and God bless you to Pontiac's state and federal representatives to go into the mat for this major infrastructure project. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones. McGinnis.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution's adopted. We're at number 11. This is about removal and remediation contract for past underground storage tanks that are next door at the Public Safety Building and then across the street at the fire station on Pike Street. Is there a motion adopting the resolution?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman James. This matters now before us. Mayor and Administration, you have the floor.
Well, I think this speaks for itself to a large extent, but we've got old underground storage tanks on city property that need to be properly and safely removed, and I'll turn it over to our DPW Director Larry Searls.
Thank you, Mayor. So with, with this project, we will actually be filling one in place, one of the underground storage tanks. The plan was drawn and approved by the EPA, actually by Eagle. EPA was the regulatory agency that came to us and said, hey, you have these tanks, they're not monitorable, you've got to do something. So in a short timeline, we, not a super short timeline, but we put the proper time in to develop a plan that Eagle said, yes, this will work. One will be removed, one will be filled in place because of the high, high voltage electric lines that are running in close proximity. This contract will not be awarded without the vendor being completely in compliance with all of our compliance rules.
And which is which? Which one's getting filled, which one's getting removed? No pressure if you don't have that top ahead.
That's a lot of pressure. Oh, the one at the police, uh, fire is the one that has the electrical conflict, or the one at the police station has the electric conflict. The one at the fire station will be removed.
Okay. Do you know how quickly the removal will take? Like is this days?
This is a month. This is a month.
I live next door, so I'm trying to understand what my sleep pattern might change. Okay. All right, so we're talking about Pike Street, their fire station, that'll be removal and fill, or you know, and then filled in place for the Public Safety Building now used as the sheriff's substation, but city property. Okay, Councilwoman James.
Yeah, I, I have a question on it being filled because I thought neither one of them were actually active. So you're saying the one at the police department is actually active?
When I say filled, it's going to be filled with concrete.
Oh.
So that it.
Not fuel.
Not fuel.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And, and it's actually a flowable fill, so it's a lightweight con, concrete. So if there was ever a full redevelopment or those lines were out of the way, the tank could still come out of the ground without, you know, giant equipment.
Thank you for that clarification, yeah.
And in terms of clearing out the stables and finishing business, this is something that the city council asked about in the first months of our term. So I'm glad that we're clearing out the stables with these, these projects and we're grateful that there's stable leadership at Public Works to help corral a lot of these initiatives. I know it's a lot for you, it's a lot for Mr. England, it's a lot for the engineering team, but it's great for us to catch up on a lot of deferred maintenance items.
And I gotta, I gotta say, it's, the purchasing department's been hitting home run after home run. We can't, we can't do it without them, so they've, they've really knocked it out for us.
Good deal. Thank you, purchasing manager. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call on adoption of the resolution approving the removal and remediation contract for those past underground storage tanks at city facilities.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Jones. McGinnis.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution's adopted. We're at number 12, resolution approving a contract for HVAC repairs at City Hall. This is in the amount of $64,832 with Lee Industrial Contracting proposed. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilwoman James, now we can discuss it. Mayor and Administration.
Well, this due is fairly straightforward. It's about repairs to the city's heating, ventilation, and cooling system, and it's a proposed contract with Lee Industrial Contracting to provide those services. And with that, I'll turn it over again to our DPW Director Larry Searls.
Thank you. This, this contract was put out for skilled trades, for open bid. We approved vendors for this type of work. We had a lot of investigation with architect and HVAC engineers. We came up with a proper plan to right-size this project. We feel we're getting a very good value and we're going to have HVAC that's reliable for, for the near, for the future. And yeah, this one's just ready to go. And I know we've been waiting on it for a long time.
Okay. Any discussion on the resolution? The clerk's office has identified a, an amendment that is necessary for language clarity. I will, the amendment, if it's moved and seconded after I read it, is that we would strike the two resolved and it would instead be now, therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council approves the agreement between Lee Industrial Contracting and the city of Pontiac and authorizes the mayor or his designee to sign the said contract for a not to exceed amount of $64,832. to sign the said contract for a not to exceed amount of $64,832. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilwoman James, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. It essentially merges the two resolved and adds clarity for intent. So is everyone clear on the proposal? Just cleaning up the language for those resolved clauses in the resolution. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of that specific amendment, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
The amendment carries. Now we're back to the main motion, the resolution as amended. Any further discussion from council members? Hearing no discussion, roll call and adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We're now at Subcommittee Reports on the Agenda. Pro Tem Carrington wants to postpone that to the next regular meeting. What's council's pleasure? Okay. So Pro Tem moves and Councilman Rutherford seconds that Subcommittee Reports be postponed to the next regular City Council meeting. Everyone clear on the motion? Any strong hackles or protests? Hearing none. Roll call, Clerk Doyle on postponing Subcommittee Reports to the next regular City Council meeting.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The resolution, excuse me, the postponement is adopted. We are now at closing comments. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
I don't have anything to share.
Deputy Mayor Stevens?
I just want to wish everyone who either celebrated this past weekend or is celebrating now a happy Diwali.
Clerk Doyle?
Just as a reminder, the election day is two weeks from today, November 4th. Early voting starts this Saturday, October 25th, at the Pontiac Public Library. Again, voter registration, new voter registration cards were sent to all voters. I would encourage everyone to look at your new voter registration card. If you don't remember where you placed it, please feel free to contact the Clerk's Office at 248-758-3200. We can let you know where your polling location is, or you can go online to mi.gov/vote to look up your polling location. Thank you.
Thank you. As a point of personal privilege, I'll be right back. But Councilwoman James, you're first up with your closing comments.
Okay, thank you. First of all, that our community, District Four Community Council Meeting will take place this coming Thursday, October 23rd at 6:00 PM. As you know, our community meetings are held at the New Mount Moriah International Church at 313 Walton Boulevard. And so everyone is welcome, particularly those people who are part of the new District Four. We welcome you to start attending those meetings. We're going to have the couple from the Salvation Army to talk about the programs that the Salvation Army offers there at, on Mount Luther King Boulevard. We're also going to have Ms. Tuzi Redman, who'll talk about, a little bit about the new down payment program that we have for the city of Pontiac. We'll normally have our code enforcement people there. We're going to have some great food, great conversation. We're going to talk about the, a little bit about our community projects, which are almost to take place. And we're excited to see those projects go in. So again, Thursday night, 6:00 PM, New Mount Moriah International Church, our District Four Community Council Meeting. And again, our, also, just to save the date, on November the 6th, which is the same week as the election, is our final meeting of the year for the District Four Council. That's our holiday meeting. Will be district, will be November 6th at the New Mount Moriah Church, 6:00 PM. As you know, the holiday meeting is usually lots of food, lots of fun. We've invited the Pontiac United Choir. They're going to be with us. Santa's going to pay a visit. We'll have lots of prizes and lots of information for you. So again, save the date for our final holiday meeting, November 6th at New Mount Moriah International Church. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman James. Councilwoman Melanie Rufford. Yeah, Councilwoman Jones? Councilwoman Goodman?
I'm going to give you one more try on that one. Councilwoman Goodman.
I'm going to say Councilwoman Goodman.
So I just want to say, you know, thank you to everyone in the community who's been working so hard these past couple, just in general, being in the community. I've actually gotten more calls about potholes in these past couple weeks than ever before, probably because it's an election season and people want to use that. But I'm happy to be able to hear from people because it means I can get to potholes actually as soon as possible. So I've actually been really happy and appreciative for that. Unfortunately, I've already been receiving questions about this. There will not be another pull-over prevention clinic this year. It is getting very cold and we will just hold that off until next spring like usual. And I also want to say I thank you to council for pushing forward again another massive housing ordinance. Again, over two-thirds of Pontiac residents are renters. And so everything that we do in that realm affects the majority of Pontiac residents, including myself. So being able to do something such, so amazing as a right-to-renew, fair notice and right-to-relocation will make massive changes for some people's lives within the city. And so I'm just deeply grateful that we've been able to do that. And I'm happy to see this, again, as another major thing that we've done for a large number of Pontiac residents. With that, I'll leave it there.
Councilman Rutherford?
We did it. We did it. Four years ago, we were given a task to move this city forward. Our bond rating four years ago was a CC, the lowest it's ever been. And now, four years later, we have a double-A bond rating, the highest in history. We did it. We provided better services, city services. We did it. We brought in home repair. We did it. They said we couldn't get the CBG funds back to the city of Pontiac. Guess what? We did it. They said we wouldn't have new housing developments in downtown or new housing pipeline. Guess what? We did it. We approved for a warm and center. We did it. We approved for a youth center. We did it. We are on the verge of a community partnership agreement, ensuring that our people continue to be at the same table. We did it. Today, while I was in my moment, I received a text from a woman who, her approval means a great deal to me. And it was Brenda Lawrence, and she told me she was proud of me. And after every bump in a row I had in this seat, every uncomfortable moment, every censor, every slanderous account, for her to confirm me in that way shows me that it's not what they say about you is what you answer to. And so to this council, to our president and our Pro Tem, I thank you. It has not been easy being in those seats. You've taken a lot. To my fellow Councilwoman James, I applaud you for sticking and standing true to what you believe in. To Mikel Goodman, you are truly a fighter, a fighter for housing and treating everybody right. To Ms. Jones, you have came a long way and you have found your voice. This council should be proud because at the end of the day, no matter what they say, they can't erase history. And when the retirees receive their money, this council can say, we did that too. And to my district, I say thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done, for every moment you've looked at me and said, what are we doing? And for the belief you've given me. No matter what the outcome, it has been an honor and a privilege to be a part of this council, and an honor and a privilege to be a part of the city, and an honor and a privilege to know you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem Carrington?
Now, you know, I don't want to go out to Councilwoman Melanie Rufford in District One. But I'd like to thank the Councilwoman for those kind words tonight. We appreciate them. District Six, District Meeting is this Thursday at Ruth Peterson Senior Center, starts at 6:00 PM. Come out. We're going to talk about some things here from city staff as well as talk about some district projects, upcoming district projects. I also want to honor those who are breast cancer survivors. I have three first cousins that are survivors from cancer, breast cancer, to be specific. So this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I just want to make sure that we encourage people to go out and get tested. Early detection is the key to making sure that people can survive from this deadly cancer. Also, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. As you can see for tonight, the community benefit agreement ordinance is very important. We plan to move as fast as we can in the next coming weeks before the next meeting so we can get something in place. Again, good night.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, representing District Seven. I want to thank Sean Preston, Perry Earl, and everyone that was involved in Murphy Park's Halloween Party. This is their eighth year. And as long as I've been on City Council, it's been a District Seven project that we've helped sponsor. It was great to be there. It was the largest one yet. And so I want to thank everyone that came out, and I look forward to that continuing to grow and keep getting stronger on the east side in Murphy Park. So thank you to everyone that played a part and volunteered in that, especially Sean Preston for being the driving organizing force behind it. To a question that came tonight, Veterans Day, no. Veterans Day does not need the permission of City Council to be Veterans Day. The resolution recognized and honored veterans in the city of Pontiac. This is the fourth of four years in which we have authored and adopted that resolution. It's recognizing that day and drawing attention to their service. And on that note, I want to thank Pro Tem Carrington and Councilman Parker in his absence. Both are military veterans. And so thank you to two of our City Council colleagues who have served our country and will be celebrating them and many of their other brothers and sisters that have worn the uniform in the city of Pontiac. So it was also asked about 350 University Drive that demolition. That was bitted out. It was properly bitted, and in fact, that was a substantially lower bidder than what was budgeted. So it was a very promising lower bid. So I just want to acknowledge that that question and answer it, that it was, went through the proper process. Everyone had the opportunity to bid on that project. And we, as a City Council, approved the lowest bidder. And I'm pleased that after four years, we're now going to be seeing that long-blighted city-owned structure get resolved. Pro Tem Carrington's leaving, slipping the note to just share about the progress. Mark Twain, do you want to take it away?
Well, I just want to say that the demolition that Mark Twain was from a private owner. It had nothing to do with the city. That went to a private owner for that demolition.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Yes. And so that demolition project is actively underway in the Pontiac Knowles neighborhood privately, a private property, and that's a private demolition paid for privately. I just want to end on a note that there was some feedback from residents tonight about projects undone, and certainly, we want to see everything moved as swift as possible. But I don't want the record to go out on the Tim Grimaldi, or he's gone. I'm about to compliment him, he's not there. But Mayor Tim Grimaldi, there he is. I just want to make the point that, you know, as much as we want everything done ASAP, and I know we all do, this is actually, in the last four years, been the highest external funding that the city of Pontiac has received in modern history, from the federal government, the state government, from the county government, and from grants. So hundreds of millions of dollars going to benefit the citizens of Pontiac, and it has created some good problems, which is that now that we have all of this funding, the highest in history. So congratulations, Mayor Grimaldi, and to this council for getting so much new funding to the table to benefit the citizens. The good problem we have is how do we move all of those projects through the pipeline, move them well, move them under budget, and get the results that we want? In the city of Pontiac right now, we have 17 active city construction projects. Seventeen. Terms of roads and infrastructure and other facilities, our recreation center, that's a lot happening. And I respect that people want that done already or done yesterday, but I don't want to close the door to the reality that we can celebrate as a city. It's not about elected officials, it's not about that. As a city, we can celebrate how epic it is that we have all of this funding to make all of these projects happen, including what we just voted for tonight, the bridge, the bridge project. That's a big deal. And I want to thank the staff, including those that are still in the chambers tonight because you're trying this massive project of helping shove all of these major wins through the pipeline as swiftly as possible and to do it well. And that goes beyond just those that are here tonight. So thank you, council colleagues, for allowing so much positive funding to come to the table for the citizens. It'll be up to the next set of leaders and the continuation of city staff to keep that progress going, keep those projects afoot. But we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that there are 17 active construction projects happening right now to improve our city and more in the pipeline. And on that note, at the next City Council meeting, November 10th, we're going to share, we've got some new information from the state about the Woodward Avenue reconfiguration project. They've given us some more specific timelines and some project phases. We'll share that as we've been getting that information too at the November 10th meeting. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Carrington.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 10:02 PM. Until we meet again, please be safe.